Okay, good evening, everybody. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, The Record, and by submission to all persons entitled to same as provided by law of a schedule including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Howe.
Here.
Councilwoman Newton.
Here.
Councilwoman Puccirelli.
Here.
Councilwoman Seaton.
Here.
And Mayor Arrington.
Here. Please join us as we salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please join us now in a moment of silence as we honor the American men and women serving abroad and as well as our first responders. Thank you, everybody. Good evening, welcome. Got a big meeting here tonight, got a lot on the agenda, glad to see we had a good turnout. Uh, I'm just gonna explain what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it, and then we'll get going. Uh, once I finish talking now, we're gonna move to our regular public comments. Thirty minutes, every, whoever wants to speak has up to five minutes a person. Then what we're gonna do is, we have a certification of the petition that came in concerning the BCIA, which Heather will explain to you. And then we're gonna move into a special public meeting. In a special public meeting, the first thing we're gonna deal with is our parking deck ordinance to bond, it's our second reading, and so it's the public hearing, and so anyone who wants to speak on the parking deck bonding issue will have an opportunity to speak. We have signup sheets over there, so please make sure you're signed up. Once that hearing begins, we're gonna take that signup sheet, so please make sure your name's on there if you wanna speak. After that, then we will then call, call those to a vote. Depending on the outcome of that vote, we have a resolution which we might be addressing, and I'll, I'll explain it as we get to it. Then following that, we have our five, what we call our multifamily housing ordinances for rezoning. These are ones that we introduced last summer. We had our first, we had our second hearing in September 16th, September 30th. We've carried it through, we've done some studies, we're gonna have the consultants here. Uh, they're gonna, they're gonna address some points that were raised at the last meeting when, when they were here, uh, and they'll be available to clarify anything that needs to be clarified with respect to the impact studies. Again, members of the public will have an opportunity to speak then, and we'll just sort of take it through that. So, with that, we will go to public comments. Uh, and again, if you're here to speak about parking deck or housing, I would ask that you keep your comments for those public hearings, so it'll be part of that record. Uh, now during public comments, you can talk about that, but you can talk about any issue you'd like.
Uh, Jeff Voight, 99 Glenwood Road, Ridgewood. Under NJSA 10-48, adequate notice of public meetings, including an agenda to be posted at least 48 hours ahead of time. I was just wondering if you could tell me why the agenda for last week's planning board meeting related to the Valley Hospital decision was posted only three hours beforehand?
I, I would address that to the planning board. I don't...
You'd have to, you'd probably have to check with the planning board secretary. They take care of their own notices, so it's not, not the council's position with regard to them.
Any other comments?
Saurabh Dhaney, 390 Bedford Road, Ridgewood. I looked at the agenda, and there's a resolution 1689, authorized referendum question, and I don't see a copy of that resolution at the desk.
Heather, is that the parking one?
1689 is right after the ordinance public hearing on 3521.
Right.
It's not on your agenda?
It's on the agenda, but I don't have the details. For all the other ordinances, you have the, the details of...
Right, right. It was revised as we walked in, so...
It, it was revised, and it'll be read out loud if we need to, if we need to move on it.
But, Mayor, you mentioned that depending on the vote on the local bond, that will dictate whether you're doing the resolution 1689 or not, and you're taking that vote and our public hearing or public comments before that, so if you don't know what the contents are for that resolution...
Sure. We'll explain it later when we get to the parking stuff, we will.
Okay, so you, you have something in the agenda, and you don't have the details at the table. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Gary Negridge, 501 Dorchester Road. On the subject of minutes being put out, three hours instead of 48 hours, if that is a true statement, and I assume that my friend over there is correct, seeing as he cited the law, isn't the outcome of that meeting therefore null and void because it was an illegal public meeting? And as the council, aren't you charged with making sure all the meetings that are under your jurisdiction are held legally so that they can be supported in case they are contested?
Thank you. That's not under our jurisdiction, but Matt, you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, they, just so everybody knows, the planning board under the municipal land use law is a, an autonomous body, it's a quasi-judicial body, it operates separate and apart from the council, has its own board secretary. We are not authorized nor are we charged to review their notices and make sure that they comply. Whatever action they may have taken is subject to whatever procedures they have in place, and whatever they, you know, whatever procedures they acted upon, so if there was some infirmity with regard to their notice, that's to be taken up with the planning board and the appropriate authorities. We have no jurisdiction over it.
Even though three members from this council sit on that board?
No, not three members, two members, the mayor and another appointed.
Oh, excuse me. Right.
Yeah. They sit on the board, but it's under the municipal land use law, it's a separate autonomous body.
So, and, and I, I just, just for a moment, I actually had realized that the agenda had not been posted, I believe Tuesday afternoon at about maybe 3:00 or 4:00, and as soon as I realized that, I called it to the attention of Roberta, and she, it was immediately posted once it was called to our attention, but I will look into it, and I have your email, I'll get back to you, and Mr. Voight as well. I will find out what happened, and I'll see, see...
It's not what happened, I wanna know what it has to do with the validity of any decisions that were made at that meeting.
No, I understand, I understand. So I will email, I'll see C. Paul on that, the mayor, and we'll email the planning board council and chairman and ask, pose that question, and I'll get back to both of you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments? All right, so we'll close the public comments. The next thing on our agenda, Heather, it's a certification of the results of the petition?
Yes. Mayor and village council members, on February 10th, 2016, the mayor and village council finally adopted ordinance 3519, entitled "An Ordinance of the Village of Ridgewood and the County of Bergen, New Jersey, Approving the Form and Authorizing the Execution and Delivery of a Lease Purchase Agreement with the Bergen County Improvement Authority Relating to the Issuance of County Guaranteed Lease Revenue Bonds, Series 2016, Village of Ridgewood Parking Deck Project by the Bergen County Improvement Authority. On February 26th, 2016, the village received a petition protesting against the passage of the ordinance. I reviewed the petition in accordance with applicable law, and the petition must contain the signature of at least 814 legal voters of the village to be deemed sufficient. The petition contained at least 814 valid signatures. Finding the petition filed with me on February 26th, 2016 as sufficient, I hereby submit the petition to the village council without delay."
Thank you, Heather. Now I'd like to motion to suspend the work session and convene a special public meeting.
Second.
Okay, so, the mayor. Howe?
So it was moved, moved in second?
Yeah, moved in a second.
Yes. Okay, yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
And Arrington?
Yes. At quinotes that this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, The Record, and by submission to all persons entitled to same as provided by law of a schedule including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Howe.
Here.
Councilwoman Newton.
Here.
Councilwoman Puccirelli.
Here.
Councilwoman Seaton.
Here.
And Mayor Arrington.
Here. Now again, we're about to move into sort of our, actually our second reading of the, of the bond ordinance concerning construction of the Hudson Street garage. If you haven't signed up and you wanna speak, now would be the time to do it, 'cause Janet's gonna bring over the list to us. While that's happening, I move that the clerk read ordinance 3521 by title on second reading, and that the public hearing thereon be open.
Second.
Howe.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Puccirelli.
Yes.
Seaton.
Yes.
And Arrington.
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 3521?
A bond ordinance providing for the construction of the Hudson Street parking deck in and by the Village of Ridgewood in the County of Bergen, New Jersey, appropriating $11,500,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of 11,500,000 dollar bonds or notes of the village to finance the cost thereof.
And right before we do the public hearing, do you wanna read that resolution? Uh, and again, what, so what we're gonna be doing tonight, we're gonna hear your public comment on this, uh, we're gonna be voting on the bond ordinance, whether or not we should finance, we, the Village of Ridgewood, should finance parking deck. If that vote does not get the necessary supermajority, which is four votes, then we would move to a resolution which would, in line with the petitions that have, that she just certified, would then put the issue, assuming it gets the affirmative vote, would put the issue on the May 10th ballot. So that's what the, the gist of it is, she'll read the, the substance of it, and, and then we'll open the public meeting. Do you wanna do that?
Am I, are we supposed to wait till after we vote on the ordinance? Wait till after the ordinance is what?
I'm sorry?
Our bond council is telling us to do the ordinance first?
Yeah, I guess we should do the ordinance. So why don't I get the list, we can start the public hearing, and then we'll read the resolution later. Can I have? Yeah. All right, I move that the public hearing is now open, and our first speaker on our list is Jim Griffith. Please step up to the podium in your name and your address, please. And again, everybody gets five minutes to speak. Don't feel the need to use all five minutes, but if you want to, it's there for you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Jim Griffith, and I live at 159 South Irving. I'm thrilled to be talking to you about parking. It's been a long fight, and it's been a very, you have put everything out in front of the people, and there's a word for transparent, and I commend you for that. And when I look back in the history of this town, what you have done with that is a hell of a lot more than anybody else did. So getting the parking problem this close to the finish line, I accommodate you and I applaud you. Now, on the subject matter, we had a design, it was too big. The people said it was too big, and you removed 25 percent. At the same time, you had a responsibility, because it was part of your plan, to make the parking deck self-sufficient. Two percent tax raises? No. You wanted the parking deck to work by itself. Would like to have made it smaller, it violates that rule. So, I'm thrilled with where we stand right now. I am sorry that you have to put up with such nonsense. The nonsense I'm talking about is that flyer that came out right before the last vote. No chance to respond. The picture on the front of the flyer was the effort of a fornicator to disrupt the picture of truth. The, the words on the back of the flyer were absolutely false. Absolutely false. Now I understand that a lot of you people were disrupted by a nasty phone call yesterday and last night. I was fortunate, I did not get it. Somebody told me that the flyer on the train this morning was so short of fact and so close to lying that it was sickening, all right? I think it's horrible that this town, and what it is, can be disrupted by some people who are willing to turn it into a moral slum just by their selfish desires to get what they want and not what the community wants. Also, step one in solving any critical problem is the same whether you're in the inventory, whether you're on the board, or you're under negotiation. It's the same first step. Is anybody at risk of death? No. Is anybody in need and being hurt? The answer is yes. You've had five members of the business, five responsible members of the business community come up in front of you and tell them that parking is a serious issue, and that if we don't get it straightened out and addressed, it is gonna do great harm to the business community. We can't live without the business community. You look at the Christmas celebration, the new, the old cars, the fair that we have in town, all of these events, we didn't have them 20 years ago. It's a different town now, and we're proud of our downtown area, and we need to keep it healthy. When I moved in, you had four restaurants. When I came out of church, if I wanted to have a little, I went to Al and Harry's and had a Danish. Now I have fish. There's a big difference between fish and Al's and Harry's. Big difference. It takes a much bigger investment to bring that kind of community to our town down, and we got to help our downtown. We have to stand up as you're doing, as you're doing, and trying to help them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rorik Alaby.
Rorik Alaby, 374 Evergreen Place, and I urge four of you to vote to, to bond the thing through the village, but if we can't get the vote, then the three of you do what you can to get the county to do it. Ridgewood needs the garage. I think it's a terrific design. I realize the, what I call the vocal aunties, vocal aunties, have pulled every trick in the book to derail the project, and some of their antics were really disgusting. And, anyway, that's behind us. We have an opportunity for four of you to vote in favor. And will one of the two have the courage to join the three? Time will tell. We need the garage. The design is great, in my opinion, a year after it's up, people won't even notice it's there. And I think within a year after it goes up, the biggest fans of the garage will be the rationers at the Mount Carmel, who are gonna roll up to join against the what-have-you, because they're gonna have a terrific garage for their weddings and their funerals, et cetera. We need the parking garage, there is no question about it, it has been started every which way. You people have pulled every thing you could to make sure the process was transparent, you held hearings, the deputy mayor, people had a chance to talk about it. You're very flexible, make it higher, make it lower, move it forward, move it back. You, you aren't dictating the garage, so you have, I have a feeling that many people following me will be a little bit like the communists when they cross the Yellow River, and it'll be one wave after another, which I think will be sad, but just hold on to your positions, and hopefully one of you will have the courage to join you, so to make it easy. And I tell you, history's on your side. You'll be subject all of abuse, hanging there, and Ridgewood in 20 years will look back and say, "Thank you."
Thank you. Next speaker, John Saraceno.
Good evening.
Good evening. John Saraceno, 17 Coventry Court. Um, I've sort of been around parking in this town since 2007. When our firm was designated to develop the garage on Walnut Street, and worked for approximately two years with the council at that time, and the village manager, Jim Tenhoe, to complete the construction of that garage, in an attempt to add parking after preliminary studies indicated over years and years and decades that garage and a parking system was necessary. And we got caught up in a sort of political moment at the end of it, after a lot of time and effort and energy, that sort of ended that process. And what was clearly a rational thought process relative to doing it, and one that would've clearly had a garage there today, got destroyed, not based on sort of pragmatic study that said, "Don't do it," but rather in a sort of political moment relative to an election. So what I'd ask is that, I think the facts are clear, which is we need a garage. I think the studies have shown for decades that we need a garage. And the question right now for this council is, do we let politics get in the way of doing it again, or do we just look at the facts as presented? No garage is perfect. The garage in 2007 wasn't perfect. I'm sure there's things about this garage that people don't like, and there are things about this garage that people who like the garage are disappointed it's not bigger than it was originally so scoped out to be. But I would hope we don't let politics get in the way of progress, and I think it's time that we support the CBD and the Central Business District in a way that we hear our businesses who constantly tell us as they go in and out of business that parking is the number one thing that their clientele tells them they have a problem with. So please, sort of think it through, take the moment to establish something good for Ridgewood, 'cause I think this is the one. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. 17 Chestnut Street with Roots Steakhouse. I'm gonna try to keep my comments simple here. We have other restaurants in other areas, Roots and Summit, we have a location in Morristown, and they didn't have parking. They got garages, as somebody was saying in the beginning, it was a big fight for it. Once they put the garages up, now they want another garage. In Summit, we have two garages, now they're putting a third garage up. Morristown was not doing very well, they put an eight-level parking garage up, and it's amazing how Morristown is striving. Princeton has one parking garage, they built another one, they're gonna tear it down and build another one on top of it bigger, so we would ask that, please look at it. All the different places that we look at have garages, and it just makes people come to the restaurants and successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
How are you? Made some notes. My name is Hans Lehman, I live at 234 Union Street, which is only a few blocks from the proposed garage and the various housing projects currently under consideration. It's also a street that handled some of the on-street parking for people visiting the Central Business District. Personally, I've been a resident of Ridgewood for the past 21 years. I've been retired for 13 years now, I spent my retirement volunteering on the zoning board and as president of Share, a nonprofit that provides senior housing. In a general sense, I have come to love and appreciate Ridgewood and all that it has to offer. People who move to Ridgewood come here for its housing, its highly reputed educational system, its vibrant downtown with shopping and restaurants, a downtown which is very walkable and friendly, and a town which was probably the best railroad station in the county, as well as a bus terminal, both of which allow ready access to New York City. Many in attendance tonight like to call Ridgewood a village and think of it in a sort of bucolic or quaint way. Our government happens to be a village style, but this is a town of 25,000 residents with one of the largest school districts in the area, a downtown with lots of shopping and restaurants, and lots of people who come here from all over Bergen County to enjoy what Ridgewood has to offer. In fact, Ridgewood is a hub for this part of Bergen County. As such, we have a Central Business District which is an important part of the economic life of Ridgewood. It attracts people to Ridgewood who spend their money here, going out to restaurants and shopping. All of this makes it important for us to provide the proper climate for business to thrive. I have heard many people from out of town complaining how difficult it is to find parking in town, especially on Fridays and Saturdays. Often, people will opt to go somewhere that provides greater ease of parking. That is a serious negative for Ridgewood, and it behooves us to change that situation with a parking garage. In fact, we probably need another parking garage elsewhere in town. A previous study conducted by Rich and Associates found that parking in the downtown area showed a deficit of nearly 1,300 spaces, and that was in 2002, and a projected shortage of nearly 2,000 spaces within 10 years. That's now. We love studies in Ridgewood, and we need to pay them some heed, and I would very much encourage the council to take my words into consideration and approve a garage here and now, because we need it very desperately. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening again. Tony D'Amiano, 274 South Broad Street. This has been a long journey, it has been an eye-opener for me, for the good and the bad of it. Just for the record, I am endorsing parking facility D. I was not in favor of A and B, but I think D works very nicely. I took it upon myself to apologize to Ken Shear, as you know, I couldn't make the HPC meeting, and the letter that I had written that was requested by Vince Perillo on my meeting with Ken Shear, I mistakenly said that the garage would fit on the space. I knew that it didn't, I just wanna clear that. I was lying, et cetera, it was simply an error on my part. There were so many plans, et cetera. I did understand the sidewalk was going to be extended by five feet, fits nicely, et cetera. So I hope you all will vote wisely. The downtown is the heartbeat of Ridgewood, as I've said before, and a garage is so greatly needed. I, I live and breathe the downtown, I am in my store six days, sometimes seven days a week, sometimes working long hours. I understand the mechanics behind the downtown and the mechanics behind many other downtowns, and they all have ample parking, let alone for the consumers, but for the employees. For those who are concerned, I do have a vested interest in this garage. I own a business in town. Unfortunately, I cannot get enough business owners to speak, they're afraid to speak. I am pleased to see some here tonight, but I can tell you this, I get many emails and phone calls and people stopping in Mango Jam to find out what's going on, is it a go, is it not? So there is, there is, there are so many businesses in favor of this facility, and it is much needed. Because of the error that I made, I was, it was suggested by a friend of mine to go on the Ridgewood blog, which I found to be really lethal. It is really social media at its worst, and I just feel the need to comment on that, that we are such a wonderful community, and I feel it had been tarnished. I went on and read 21 anonymous comments. Many comments hitting below the belt, having nothing to do with the garage or the luxury living, just really mean comments. And, and I just have to comment on that, that 21 comments that were anonymous, in my mind, that just shows cowardice. If you have a comment, a suggestion, an opinion, sign your name to it, for God's sakes. You know, we all live and work together, and we have to respect one another. Just one other comment on, I think Gwen called them benign spaces such as Brogan and Ken. If we don't see luxury living there, I wanna know what the vision is, because no anchor, no retail anchor will come.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Tony, you said on the parking.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm getting to that. No re, no retail anchor will come because there isn't sufficient parking. They go hand in hand, and no CBD has no parking, as you've heard the gentleman from Roots, Andrew, saying about Summit and Morristown and Montclair, the list... The list goes on and on. In Ridgewood, we're spinning our wheels here and getting nowhere. Businesses come and go because the customers cannot get to the stores. So yes, I do have a vested interest in this garage, and I hope you make the right decision. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Hi. John Vermillion, 241 North Walnut Street. Apologies, this is my first time speaking, so I'm gonna read off my phone. My family and I moved to Ridgewood two years ago from California. We had many towns to choose from with great schools, nice houses, and a safe, strong community. For us, the thing that most differentiated Ridgewood from all the others was its vibrant downtown. We bought a house within close walking distance of the downtown. We are extremely committed to having a vibrant downtown in Ridgewood. I also voted yes for the non-binding referendum on funding a parking garage last fall, and that's because I think it would help support and grow that vibrant downtown. I also believe the Hudson Street lot is a good location for the garage. Not perfect, but a good location for the garage. It's in the part of town with the greatest shortage of parking and would serve several different kinds of parking needs. I think the plan for this garage will work. I've also followed the process along in detail, read all the relevant reports, and watched videos of these council meetings, and participated in many discussions online about this issue. As this is the first issue I've followed in detail, I want to comment first on the tone of the debate. I've been above all extremely disappointed by how some have behaved themselves on this issue. And I'm saying "some," and I'm saying "all sides," just to be clear. I was shocked to see some residents and even officials on all sides of this issue resort to insults, misinformation, and just simply treating each other poorly. We are all part of the same community, and we all want the best for Ridgewood. I'd encourage us all to do better going forward, starting today. The negative tone has by far been what I've found most disappointing since moving here. While I've disagreed with those opposed to this garage for many reasons, I'd also like to thank the opposition for two things. First, without their efforts, I don't believe we'd ever reach a design as strong as option D. Though I personally didn't realize it at the time, the footprint of the option A was simply too big for that location. Thank you to everyone who paid attention and made such a strong stand against that initial design. Secondly, thank you to those who led and supported the "no" on BCIA campaign. It is much better that this be funded through the town than through the county. We wouldn't be about to pass a town-funded garage without that effort. Lastly, I'd also like to thank Roberta and Ken Shear for addressing an issue with one of the garage renderings that I had noticed last week. It turns out there was an issue with, on the technical level, vanishing points and corner locations in the rendering, and Roberta and Ken thankfully responded very quickly to my concerns and created and released a new rendering. I was glad to see that responsiveness and willingness to admit a mistake and update it as needed. So to the village council, I'd encourage you to all to vote yes for the garage. This is a reasonable plan. It's not perfect. It's in a good location. It's not perfect for a town-owned garage. It's big, without a doubt, but I don't think it's too big for our village. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kevin Matasik.
Matasik.
Matasik, sorry.
Matasik.
Kevin Matasik.
Oh, Matasik.
T-I-S. Good evening.
Good evening. Kevin Matasik, 836 Morningside Road. Proud resident of Ridgewood for over 50 years. I was just gonna say a couple of things, but, and I don't want to spoil the mood of the last speaker, but I think I do have to respond to the first two speakers. Now, I've lived in town longer than both of them, so to a certain extent, I can excuse their youth and their experience with the town. But I think the pointed comments about those of us who are opposed to the parking lot are completely inappropriate. And if that's what's guiding us, then we're wrong. I grew up in this town when it was at odds with each other over the Vietnam War. Our parents were, were, were two vets. We were all hippies. Gwen and I will remember the woman in our class who wanted to play on the softball, on the baseball team and wasn't allowed. And I think Jim Griffin might have been one of the people in my father's living room, drinking scotch and smoking cigars and debating that very serious issue as to whether a woman could play in baseball. The town was very divided. I haven't seen it divided as it is now. I have not seen it as divided as it is now. And I grew up in very turbulent times, and I'm very concerned by that. And that's why, with due respect to Mr. Hallam and Mr. Griffin, I just, I needed to say that, because those comments were just off-base. So where do we go? Well, I had some comments about the garage, but I have a feeling that we're in such an impasse and that we are so at each other's throats that perhaps, with all due respect, this council should not be voting on this measure tonight. Go forward, get everything ready, get it ready for the next council. Lines are drawn between those candidates who are in favor of this garage and are against it. And I know it's not housing time, but I'm gonna speak about housing as well. Lines are drawn between those who are in favor of housing and against housing. And I think, this is my personal view, I could be wrong, I think the view on the council is going to change come election time. And so I think it's in the best interest of not causing further wounds to the community, not causing further rifts to the community, that you bring everything up to the point that if those who are elected are gonna go forward, it's ready for them. It's wrapped in a bow and ready to go. On the other hand, if the voters come out in a majority and say, "No, we're voting for candidates who don't want a four-story garage, they want two, two-story garages. We don't want a four-story garage. We want one-way streets with diagonal parking. We don't want the four-story garage yet. We want to try other options." Then those people can proceed. But if you make this decision now, if the spades start going into the ground before that vote takes place, you'll dig not only a hole in the ground at Hudson Street, but a further hole and a further wound into the village of Ridgewood. So I urge you strongly, you don't have to vote yes, you don't have to vote no tonight. You can postpone this vote until it's time that the new council is in place. And I think, if you really think about it, and you think about what's right for Ridgewood, two months, six weeks, is not gonna make a bit of difference as to the parking that we've supposedly waited for for 60 or 80 years. But digging that spade into the heart of our town now will be something that will never be forgotten and may never be mended. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette LaRocco.
Good evening. Jeanette LaRocco, L.A., capital R-O-C-C-O, 454 Bogart Avenue. And by the way, to those previous speakers, it's called a democracy, where dissension is allowed and encouraged. Now, tonight you are voting on a very important ordinance. The garage has been an ongoing discussion for decades and is close to fruition. And whatever decision you make tonight will change the face of Ridgewood forever. As they say, "When you let the horse out of the barn, you can't put it back." So I, and many others, have come here tonight to ask this council to think carefully about your decision. Like many residents, I voted for the garage. However, as I've said before, I did not vote for this overly large garage. I thought we were voting for a right-sized garage which would fit on the footprint and the neighborhood. I was reminded of this last Friday when I had breakfast with a friend at Sook. And while I was sitting there facing the window, I started imagining how the current oversized garage, because that is what it is, would look like when it was built. And what I imagined it would look like in its current incarnation was not good. When I thought of how many businesses and shoppers and nearby residents would have to look at this monstrosity while dining and or shopping, I was sad. Sad, and because once you build it, it will not be coming down for decades if ever. And the view would be greatly reduced, and no garage on earth is going to be as beautiful as the church nearby or any other type of building. A garage is a garage is a garage. I am asking all of you council members to vote no for Garage D and go back and work on a compromise that will fit the footprint and that will enhance the beauty of Ridgewood and not become a blight that will negatively affect the village for decades to come. And that will also encourage a unanimous vote, so we will be able to self-fund the garage, which I and many others feel is the best solution for Ridgewood. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Bruce Reynolds.
Good evening. Good evening. Bruce Reynolds, 427 Pondfield Place. Resident for 21-plus years. Very proud to be a resident, and I think one thing in terms of speakers supporting the garage that I disagree with is what the charter of this town is. I consider the charter to be about the residents of this town and also about educating our students. I would say that, yes, this town could survive without businesses. And as far as I'm concerned, supporting businesses is not part of the Ridgewood charter. Please, please, folks, please. So for, so for that reason, obviously you can tell I'm opposed to the garage, and I also am opposed to the process that I've seen happen. So let me just hit on some quick points. We'll do it in five minutes. First is public safety with a garage. I consider garages to be very dangerous in terms of public safety. If I read from the U.S. Department of Justice, I'll quote, "Because parking facilities are more likely settings for crime, both violent and property, than all other real estate except residential, security is one of the most critical issues facing the owners and operators of parking facilities." That will be county-owned or county-supported and also Ridgewood-supported. I think the whole study has not been complete enough in terms of its self-supporting, both in terms of maintenance and keeping a garage up, but also in terms of looking at this situation in terms of crime and garages. I think it's a big, big factor, and I think there's a lot of articles and a lot of information on it that's not come forward. The next thing is, it goes back to sort of, when we moved to this town, we moved to this town because of words like quaint, charming. We've heard it from other speakers. As far as I'm concerned, and as far as many residents are concerned, this parking garage will be an eyesore. This will be the opposite of quaint, charming, what Ridgewood is about. So I really believe that, I'd like you to consider that as a council. Let me talk to you about process. The vote that happened in the fall, very clearly on that ballot, it said, "This is not a referendum." And as far as I'm concerned, it should not have been on the ballot. If it is not a referendum, it should not be on the ballot. And when I saw that on the ballot, I said, "I'm not, I'm not supporting this. It's a, it's a public opinion poll." And then I've heard since that the council considers that a mandate, the results of that off-election, non-referendum on the ballot, as somehow a mandate. That's wrong. This, this issue, $11 million that could be spent on our students, should go to referendum, serious referendum. Not, this is not referendum, this is a public opinion poll. That process was wrong. It was deceiving. It was on and off-election, and I'm not happy with it. Next is the involvement of Bergen County. I'm amazed that Bergen County officials would support one of the wealthiest towns in Bergen County on a parking garage. I really think that Bergen County officials need to step up and speak, and I think if we can't support this on our own, we, we have to debate whether we should be supporting it all. Finally, I, I hear a lot of the council is gonna turn over, and in terms of businesses, half the businesses that exist today will not be here two years from now. That's kind of the statistic. So it's interesting that we're doing all this for the business. A good chunk of the council will not be here after this vote. And I refer to it as like, you know, the old kid's game of ding-dong ditch. You know, we're gonna commit, we're gonna, we're gonna commit the voters and the taxpayers of this town to $11 million, and then we'll be gone. The businesses that are supporting it will be gone. The council will be gone. Previous speaker said, "I would ask you to," I would like to see this go to a referendum. It's a serious enough issue. It's enough money, and it should go to referendum. And a real referendum on, on this coming political election where it's well-attended. That will separate this, that will stop us from arguing about this. We get the facts out, take it to a referendum. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi. I'm Art Rubell, excuse me, 79 Ridge Road. I want to approach this from a slightly different angle, from aesthetics. Now, you all know I was chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission since its inception, really. About 20 years ago, we created Historic District, and this parking lot that was adjacent to it was not in the district, because I felt that it was certainly not contributing to anything in the district. As a matter of fact, when you look at parking lots in the downtown area and other downtowns all over the, you know, all over Bergen County, all over the country for that matter, they're really eyesores. They interrupt the flow of the city, they interrupt the flow of the architecture. And this particular garage is, I think the net effect is gonna be a positive contribution to the Historic District. It will eliminate this awful, I mean, I think it's a slum or parking, parking lot. It exposes the rear of all the buildings on, on Ridgewood Avenue. It's really, it's really very unattractive. Now, the parking garage, as you've designed it, really has a good scale to it. The floors are articulated, there's brick infill, it's not a blank wall. It really has a good scale to it. And it also creates the solid, continuity around the block. So you really feel like you're walking in a downtown area, not past the parking lot. I don't think the garage will overwhelm anybody. I think when people sit at Sook and look at the garage and compare it to a parking lot, they'll find it as a positive contribution. And I've also, also said previously that the architecture of the garage is really very compatible and very sympathetic to the architecture we have in the village. And I've heard a lot tonight about various things. I think most of the speakers have been at least 50% correct and factual, and I don't want to address anyone, but I'm amazed, having lived here for, I think, almost 50 years, that we could really ask our council to become a lame-duck council and not vote on anything and not do anything, because another council is coming in. That kind of thinking, you know, escalated, really may, really can be, you can think about the future. Maybe we ought to wait four more years, you know, wait for another council. But it, it's really not, not reasonable, it's not fair, it's, it's not intelligent to wait for another council, because that council could be influenced and maybe change their vote, you know? And thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Gary Negritz, 501 Dorchester Road, Ridgewood. I'll try and make this brief. We want a garage. We need a garage. We told you that we were willing to pay for a garage. All right? Those are all the pluses. You have said to us, "You want to give us a garage." That's a plus. So we got four out of four. But when I bought my house, after my wife looked at 40 of them, I looked at 10. And I went through every nut, bolt, screw before I put my name down on a mortgage of a whopping $41,000. Can you believe that? I couldn't buy the tree in front of my house for that today. We still want to pay for this. We don't want the county in here, because you know what they're gonna do? They're gonna tell us that everybody who wants to drive down here so they can leave on the Ridgewood train is gonna fill it up. That's what they'll do with it. Whereas if it's our garage, we can make sure that Ridgewood residents get the first cut. And we should have it. We're paying for it. One way or the other, we're paying for it. So number one, I think we need to control our garage in our town, because there's too many other people in Bergen County. They outnumber. They outnumber us. We're a town of twenty-five thousand. We don't have the weight if we give away our control. So, that's one issue. The other issue is, I went and I looked at all those houses. And my wife had looked at the kitchen, and she looked at the neighborhood, and she checked the schools. I went down in the basement, I checked the boiler, I checked the electrical plant, I checked the air, I checked the windows. You know what? You've got a budget for eleven and a half million dollars, and if you build that garage for fifteen, I'll sell my house and give you the money. You've got a cartoon, it's a very pleasant-looking one. I assume somebody square-footed the number of cars you can park. I don't know that anybody's really analyzed the entrance thing and exiting so we don't kill some kid walking down the street. But has anybody looked at what kind of mechanical and electrical systems you've got to put in? Where you're gonna put them? How much space they're gonna eat up? Where you're gonna exhaust the carbon monoxide system? You're gonna have to do all those things, and yet all we have seen as residents is the cartoon. You didn't buy your house in this town on a cartoon, but you did buy a house here, you kicked the tires. I think what we're saying to you is, "We want the garage, we want it now, we want to pay for it now, and we'll pay what it costs to get it, but we want to kick the tire. So show us the inside, show us the guts, show us what's gonna make our investment worth it." That's what we're asking you for. We're not saying we don't want the garage. And if you could show us that tomorrow, we'd probably come in here and next week and say, "You know what? We can do this." But showing me a cartoon is like showing me the outside of a Cadillac. It's great, but what's inside? Is it the cotton upholstery, the leather upholstery? Does it have the electronics? I don't know what's in this garage. I want this garage. I'm willing to pay for it. But I want to control it. Because I don't want, and I'll just step off the line here, the people who only have to put one parking space in the multi-housing, even though it's against what the state says should be, which is one point eight, they'll fill the thing up, the developer will love it because he didn't have to eat up the real estate, and we still won't have any parking. So, couple of things to think about when you vote tonight. But we want the garage, we want to pay for it. Show us what we're buying, not just the cartoon.
Thank you. Kathy Noe?
Uh, excuse me, Mayor. I would just like to correct one small, small thing. Gary, we actually, I'm a liaison to the Shade Tree Commission, and we have an Adopt a Tree program, so for three hundred and fifty dollars, you can plant a tree in front of your home, not forty-one thousand. So I just wanted to clear that up.
A new Christmas tree.
Good evening.
He donated it this year. Kathy Noe, 623 Ellington Road. Um, I have to agree with Mr. Negresh. I think there is a need for parking. Uh, my grandchildren, on my side of the family, are fourth generation. On the other side, on their father's side, they're third generation. It's a special place. What's happened with this whole process between neighbors and rural neighbors is horrible. It's not Ridgewood. Um, I think we need to work together. I don't like some of the, the way things have been done. I, I just feel that it's just not Ridgewood. We're a special place, the character has to be maintained, we're not Montclair, we're not Summit. We don't owe outsiders anything. If my neighbors need parking to go to work, that's one thing. If my neighbors need a place to park to go downtown and enjoy what we have, that's fine. But I don't think we have to support the developers' need, as Mr. Negresh said, with the parking, or anyone else. These people here, we need to be able to enjoy our town. And outsiders, and I don't want the county involved with the money. I want to be able to have the people of this town decide and be in control of it always. We're, we're a wonderful town, we can finance it, it's been a wonderful place, and I want to have this town remain what it's been for me, growing up, and what it's been for my children, and what it's, hopefully will be for my grandchildren. And that's what I want. I, I want to be able to, to see my neighbors, whether it's on the one side, that we could talk about it calmly, because that hasn't happened. And I think the tone of that has come unfortunately from some of the council. And I respect everyone for their time, for serving, but I've never, ever seen anything like this in town, and I have followed council meetings since I bought my own house thirty-four years ago. And I'm ashamed of that. And I want my neighbors all to be happy, and I think we all agree. Yes, we want parking, but not with other people telling us how to do it, or to be beholden to anybody. Be beholden to the residents of this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Sally Brandis, 515 Stevens Avenue. Well, after the last couple of speakers, there's not too much I can add to that except ditto. Um, but I do have a concern, and as we're looking tonight at both a parking garage and multifamily housing throughout the town, I don't think that one garage, or an oversized garage, just at one end of town is really going to be sufficient to really take care of the needs. I'm not looking to have such a large garage. I would rather have two garages perhaps, one at one end of town, one at the other, but neither one super-large. But because we're now catering, I would say, to developers, all the land that we could possibly maybe use for an auxiliary garage will not be available because we're making sure we're selling it off to developers. And that's a real concern to me. I also see that we don't have any room supposedly for low-income housing. Is this town so, I'm gonna use the word snobbish, that we cannot make room for those who do not have what many of us have? We'll sell it all to the high-end housing and make sure that these other individuals cannot move into the town we love so much. So that's my concern. I also would like to keep it with the residents, that's our taxes. At work, I want the representation there, whether it's this council, another council. I want to be in charge of what's charged. I want to be involved with, you know, the way it is for the church there. I don't go to that church, but I feel for the people there. That church has been there longer than any parking garage will be. So I think we really have to take that into consideration, the residents first. Businesses, yes, it's nice, we enjoy the businesses, but many, and they'll pay taxes, but they don't all live in town either. We've, we've lived here, I've lived here forty-two years, paid the taxes, love what I get for it, and don't have any, you know, anything in mind to be leaving this town. But I want to be proud of us, and I want to make room for everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diane Palacios, 342 North Van Dean Avenue. Yeah, I've lived here for a long time, since nineteen seventy-eight. Yes, it's true that, um, the idea of building a garage has been thought of for decades, and it didn't work out. And I think the reason why it hasn't worked out is because Ridgewood is a, has a certain style, a certain atmosphere, a certain charm, a certain quaintness. I know some people don't like those words, or I, I call those people naysayers. I'm not a naysayer. I still feel that Ridgewood is a village, I'm not gonna say nay to that. And I feel that deep inside, they, the reason why it hasn't been built large is because it's destroying the soul of Ridgewood. And I understand and experience a problem parking. And my solution would be to have several parking decks, second levels, in different lots in the village, down by the old Sealfond Building to Hudson Street. And I also think that Hudson Street is a very congested area right now, and I couldn't imagine, I would avoid a garage myself, like the plague. I think it's a terrible location. And I'm gonna say this, and, and I don't want to get blamed for it. I don't know Dave Sloman. I've seen him when I watched on television, I have no connection with him, people think I do. I've never spoken to the man. But I love his ideas. And I was once watching on television...
Please folks, please folks.
I was once watching on television where he begged to be given a chance to have his ideas implemented. He had wonderful ideas, and what's the hurry? Let's give the guy a chance. I have no connection to him, he, I hope people believe me. And, but, what?
Please, please.
But I love Ridgewood, and I would, and I, and I think of, when we're thinking of parking, I think we should think Frank Lloyd Wright, and doing something with a scalpel rather than a bulldozer.
Thank you.
Bob Furman, forty-nine Clinton Avenue. Uh, I'll be very brief. When the bond issue was on the ballot in November, there was really no other drawing card to get people to come out and vote. Uh, there was nothing significant in that November election. Close to seventy percent of the voters voted in favor of a fourteen-million-dollar bond issue. Uh, and it was a relatively large turnout. I'm sure those same people would be, are now gonna be thrilled that they're only, only gonna be looking at eleven and a half million dollars. The only difference here is, uh, if this is put on the May ballot, I'm going to, I, I expect those same people to come out and vote in favor. The difference being that we will be beholden to the county. It's in your hands tonight to take control so that we can move forward and take care of our own garage and take care of our own citizens. Uh, I'd love to see a five-oh vote, uh, but four-one works for me as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Good evening. Good evening. Ellen McNamara, one-twenty West Ridgewood Avenue. I'm here tonight to ask you once and for all to please listen to the residents. I was one of the people that voted yes on the bond referendum because I believed that the final product would be born out of discussion amongst the council with input from the residents. I believed it would fit into the neighborhood, I believed it would fit on the lot on which it was meant to stand. The original design was so outrageous, going into the street by twenty-three feet, it should never have been the starting point. I believe we can do better than where we are now. This will be a permanent structure in our historic downtown district, we need to get it right. The current design, at four stories, five levels, is too big for the area. At forty-six feet, eight inches for the main building, and sixty feet, ten inches for the towers. It will tower over the twenty-foot, five-inch Knights of Columbus, twenty-four-foot Village Green, and the twenty-two-foot Pearl Restaurant that surrounds it. Our Lady of Mount Carmel is the jewel of the block now at fifty feet. It will be looked down upon with this design in more ways than one. If the current design were to come down one story, it would still be ten to fifteen feet taller than all of those buildings, but blend in better and allow OLMC to maintain its prominence on the block. You have the ability to add more on-street parking outlined in Mayor Aronson's letter of December two thousand and eight, and Councilman Seaton's recommendation of making the tree streets diagonal parking. All of those gained spaces would be metered parking, which earns much greater revenue than garage parking spaces. Plus, you would get the added benefit of adding spaces where most people want them, on the street and in front of the shops and restaurants. I urge you to sit down at the table and discuss these options. If you vote to bond in-house tonight with this current design, we are prepared to take legal action with another petition, as allowed under New Jersey S.A. forty-eight A dash two eighteen. That would stop the funding. That would mean two to three months of not being able to proceed with any funding. Nobody wants to stop a parking garage from being built, we just want one that is right size for the location. It's your decision. Agree to table the vote until next week. Take the week to work out all the pros and cons of this design minus one floor. Let's see what working together can really accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Surab Dhaney, three ninety Bedford Road, Ridgewood. Mayor Aronson, uh, two we, two meetings, two council meetings ago, you had promised that you will introduce an ordinance to repeal BCI A bond on the same night when local bond ordinance passes. You had promised to, uh, Councilman Seaton and Councilman Nudson that the same approach that you took on January twenty-seventh or February tenth, when BCI A vote, vote was passed, and immediately following, or local bond failed, and immediately you introduced the BCI A. Uh, you'll take the same approach, and on the night when local bond passes, you will, you are, you are ready to introduce BCI A repeal ordinance. And, um, that's what we all believed, and you have not kept your word. Because in today's agenda, I don't see any, uh, anything for BCI A repeal. Another thing, um, on January twenty-seventh, the village manager had notified us, notified to us that a study was being commissioned with Walker Consultants to identify how many parking spots in the garage will go to commuters, and how many will be for the hourly parking. There was a, a report posted online, um, in a draft mode from Walker Consultants, and that, I've looked at the report, initial draft report, um, it calls for sixty percent parking for the monthly subscribers and forty percent for hourly spots. In other words, out of five stories, it will be about three stories for monthly parking or commuters, and two stories for hourly. Is my understanding correct that the proposed garage will be sixty percent commuter parking and forty percent retail during the commuting hours of six AM to seven PM? Because they have mentioned that after seven PM or after the non-peak hours, you can mark or use the monthly parking also for hourly spots. If this assumption is not correct, when can we expect the details? We have been hearing since early Jan. that we are, we have, we can decide it, and we are working on it, but we don't have those details. So if, between when we are considering the committee of BCI A petitioners, whether we want to withdraw the BCI A petition, we want to go forward with BCI A, we don't have, have all those details even as of today. And if the details or draft report that is posted online is correct, then it will be sixty percent commuter parking or three stories of commuter parking, and Ridgewood will not be able to decide how many of those commuters are from Ridgewood, and how many of those commuters are from entire Bergen County. We'll have to give the same price, same preference for three-story or sixty percent of the parking garage to anybody in the Bergen County. Lastly, as Ellen just spoke earlier, I would like to respectfully reiterate that we are ready to start another petition under NJSA forty-eight through eighteen to stop or delay all funding sources. We have done it once, and last time we received almost double the required signatures. We have, we are confident that we can get the required signatures again. That would mean two to three months of not being able to proceed with any funding. And we, we are acting in good faith, but you sit here, you promise, and you don't follow up on those promises, so we are not left with any other choice. I also urge you, like Ellen, to sit down at the table and discuss the size of the garage with your council peers. Not just the aesthetics, not just the bricks, but the size of the garage, discuss with your council peers. We don't want to stop a parking garage from being built. We just want one that is right size for that location. It's your decision, agree to table the vote until the next week, take the week to work out all the pros and cons of design D, minus one floor, as Ellen suggested, and then introduce a bond that repeals BCI A, and in the same shot introduces a local bond. Keep your promise, and if you do that, then we all... Keep your promise, and if you do that, then we all keep our word, and we won't do a petition. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Carrie Giordano?
Hi, Carrie Giordano, 57 North Hillside. I'm just gonna skip around. I agree with the approach outlined by Sarab and Ellen. Thank you both for that, for saying that. There was a question raised earlier about what else would go at the site of Brogan or Ken Smith. And I just think that's what master planning is for, that we should have a plan and have a vision, and I just don't know if the council and the town has really gone through that process, or do we just continue to be reactionary? I've always thought that a mixed use of housing or retail and parking could work, maybe a density is closer to, say, 20 units an acre, but I'm not a master planner, so, just putting that out there. I loved Councilwoman Seddon's suggestion about more parking, to add some parking on the tree streets with making them one-way and have more slanted parking, and I really hope that suggestion is acted upon, since everybody agrees we do need more parking. I just want to reiterate that I think the garage is still a level too high in that location, and I do welcome any efforts to make it one level smaller. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Lorraine Reynolds, our last speaker. Lorraine Reynolds?
Hi, Lorraine Reynolds, 550 Windermere Avenue. I really appreciate everybody saying it's because of the opposition that we have a better plan now. And I will agree that this is the best plan we have to date, but I don't believe it's the best plan that we can come up with. The process has not been an open and honest one, in my opinion. If it had been known to the majority of Bridgewood voters that the garage option A, B, and C encroached 12 feet into the street, the November 3rd vote would have never had the results it did. So this whole process started with a lie, or at least, at the very least, a huge misrepresentation. We should have never started with that option in the first place. It was unreasonable. Have you listened to the business owners who have spoken? Yes. Have you listened to the developers that have spoken? Yes. Have you listened to the president of the Chamber of Commerce? Yes. Have you listened to the residents who are ultimately on the hook for paying for this garage? I don't believe you have. Before you vote, I would like you to insist on a 3D version of what this latest version will look like in the streetscape. I, I, once that is done, if you still want to vote for that option, I'll respect your decision. But until you can see it in a 3D version with the other buildings surrounding it in the streetscape, I don't think anybody can comprehend how tall this structure is. It's too permanent a structure and too high a cost to not at least try and get the 3D ret, model. I know we've been asking for it for months and months and months, and every, you know, the architect says they don't have the capability, they don't have the, you know, it's, they can't do it, but it can be done. So if you have to go to a different place to get it done, you should. I would, I agree with Ellen, Sarab, Carrie. Sit down, postpone this one week to next week. Sit at the table, hammer it out. See if you can figure out something. See what the costs are for one level lower. You've never even discussed it. You've just said, "We've had enough discussion." I don't think you have had enough discussion. You've, you've just come, you know, you've been reactionary, and you've started with something that was way too much. You should have started with something lower. On a separate note, I know earlier you said that the referendum would be on the May 10th ballot. I just want to say this actually came from the lawyer who wrote the petition. Under the express terms of NJSA 40:69A-191, the statute, the commission, the Committee of Petitioners has 10 days to decide whether to effect a withdrawal of the petition or not. That 10 days runs out on April 2nd. April 2nd is less than 40 days before May 10th. NJSA 40:69A-192A provides as follows. Any ordinance to be voted on by the voters in accordance with Section 17-36 or Section 17-42 of this act shall be submitted at the next general or regular municipal election occurring not less than 40 days after the final date for withdrawal of the petition as provided for in section blah, blah, blah. It goes on to say that. So it then says, therefore, placing the question on the May ballot is illegal. So I would reconsider putting it on the May ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Jacqueline Hoare.
Jacqueline Hoare, 30 Carriage Blaine. As part of the petition committee, I agree with residents Sarab Doni, Ellen McNamara, and Lorraine Reynolds. I also want to reiterate that I believe the council cannot authorize to put the referendum question on the ballot for the May 10th election. I will read it again. Under the express terms of NJSA 40-69A19, the committee has 10 days to decide whether to effect a withdrawal of the petition. 10 days would bring us to April 2nd. After that, the time for submission of the question to the voters shall be at the next general or regular municipal election occurring not less than 40 days from the date of final passage and approval of the ordinance. That date would be May 12th. Therefore, as Lorraine stated before me, placing the question on the May 10th ballot is in violation of state code. I ask you to review that. More importantly, I ask you to listen to what Sarab Doni and Ellen McNamara said, which is to keep this within us here. Go back and revisit the design, table it for a week, and work together, within yourselves and with the rest of the residents of this village. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I move the public hearing to be closed. Second. No, I'm sorry. We've already, yeah, we've closed it. Sorry.
On the housing, maybe, but this, not, not on the parking. Anyway, the public, anyway, I move this public hearing to be closed. Sir, you're not, you're not entitled to speak.
Oh, I seconded it. Second.
Okay. Houck?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Puccielli?
Yes.
Seddon?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes. Before we, before, before we move on for this, I didn't know if bond councils here have wanted to address that last point that was raised with respect to whether, you know, in terms of the May 10th timeline and what have you. If you could come to the microphone. This is Matt Jessup, he's our bond counsel.
Sure, Mayor, I mean, while I can, respectfully, I think that issue is moot at the moment. Perhaps I can address it if it becomes an issue before this board.
Okay. What we do is, what we go through this issue, right, and then before we get to the resolution. Excellent, thank you. All right, so we need a council member to move the ordinance to be adopted.
Oh, did you, oh, you, I'm sorry, second, did you?
Did anyone move it yet?
No, I'll move it. I move that ordinance 3521 be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law. Oh, second.
Roll call, please.
Is there any discussion? No? Okay. Houck?
Yes.
Newton?
So I, I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts on this bond ordinance. I am supporting this this evening, but I just wanted to review some of the comments that have been made tonight. I agree the garage is currently in its current state too high. I, I think it seems to tower over the other buildings in the area, and it really doesn't harmonize with the existing streetscape. So I hope that this will be something that's looked at within the next few weeks as we move forward. Even without the third level, the last level, it still more than triples the existing parking on the lot. And parking, as we all know, is a benefit to the village, to our businesses, and to our residents. It's unfortunate, when I was listening to some residents speak, that the attacks on other residents were made. It's just simply gratuitous. It's, it's just unnecessary. And I did want to thank, before I actually vote, I wanted to thank the residents who, the many residents who had emailed us, especially though some of the emails were not particularly pleasant. So I wanted to thank the residents that sent thoughtful and considerate statements to us stating their opinions, but also, regardless of what the vote was, they supported and respected that. So I'm very much appreciative of that. As I said, I still think it's too high, but I'm hoping that maybe we can work through that in the next few weeks. So mine is a yes vote.
Okay. Puccielli?
I'd also like to comment before, before I vote. I, I think it would be a mistake if the majority of Bridgewood residents came away thinking that this process was flawed or undemocratic. I've been involved in it at the outset, and yes, there are genuine and strong feelings in opposition to this garage, and frankly, I think that's very healthy. But this has been a very protracted, thorough, thoughtful process. There has been compromise. I thank Councilwoman Nudson for working with me to come up with D, and sure, D isn't going to satisfy everybody, but I think it's a fair and good compromise. So I honestly, at a moment when I thought Bridgewood would be celebrating the time that we're finally funding this garage that's, that has been so long in coming, I, I hope that that time, now that it may very well be here, is a time for celebration, and a time for thinking that, you know what, there have been deep differences. But let's pull together and make this happen. Let's get behind the garage if it's going to go forward, and respecting each other and the differences that we've had over it, let that not be the legacy of this garage. This garage will do good things, or else I wouldn't be voting for it, and I think on balance, it is a credit to the democratic process. We have the responsibility to vote. We can't put everything to a referendum. That simply isn't the way the United States democratic process works. It is a republican form of government. We are elected officials. We have to take that responsibility. Moreover, I don't think it is good government for those of us elected until June 30th, 2016, to say, "Well, we're going to step down early." I'm not resigning. I'm working, I'm certainly staying through my term, and I intend, intend to work very hard through the end of that term. It's a disservice to say that it would be a disservice to the public if I said, "Well, I'm not going to do anything for the next four, three months." I should just step down if that were the case. Anyway, obviously, I'm voting in, in favor of self-funding this garage. I, I think the difference between BCIA funding and self-funding is at the margins. I think there are advantages to both and disadvantages to both, but I'm proud to cast this vote in favor of Bridgewood's funding the garage.
Okay. Seddon?
I do have a few comments. We've reached a point in time where a decision must be made regarding parking in our downtown, and our options have been limited by the circumstances leading up to this vote. In my opinion, the garage will be built no matter what happens here this evening, and apparently it's going to be built. So I just would like to say there are two things that I'm working on if people are concerned about funding and taxpayers having to pick up any kind of shortfalls. The suggestions that I did make to have one-way streets on the tree streets plus cottage downtown would yield roughly between 60 and 80 parking spaces. So I picked 70 in the middle of that and did a rough calculation, and came up with approximately $168,000 that 70 additional on-street parking spaces could generate. That would be at 75 cents an hour and 10 hours of enforcement, so that increases revenue by at least $168,000 at 100% occupancy. So obviously, they won't be filled all the time, but I think we could get relatively close. Also, I've been researching a business improvement district, and if Walker's predictions are as rosy as they seem, the fee for that could be very slight, and businesses or property owners closest to the garage could pay a small portion to help fund the ongoing operations and maintenance of the garage. If there's, something goes wrong with projections and it's about to fall on the taxpayers, then fees could be readjusted accordingly, and that is something I'd be happy to work with, and just to ensure that taxpayers are held harmless in this, in this entire process. So I will be voting yes also.
And Aronson?
Before I do, I think Councilwoman Houck didn't know anybody was going to be speaking, so.
Yeah, I, actually, when Susan, because we had said we weren't going to comment, we were going to vote, and then I thought comment would, would follow. So I, please don't think I was making just a brash yes vote without my, any justification. This experience up here tonight has been the best experience I've ever had, listening to public comment because of the respectful way everyone has addressed us and each other, and respected differing opinions, and coming together as a community. And that's always been the only thing I cared about in Bridgewood. I just want everyone to get along. I'm seeing my old English teacher from 13, when I was 13 years old, she's shaking her head at me. But, but I would think that she would understand, because we were all born, raised here, want to come back with our grandchildren, stay here forever. So, you know, I think in this current climate of politics, we, if any, if we're learning anything from this election, we have to learn that it's okay to disagree, and as long as we listen to each other with respect. Obviously, I am happy that Plan D kind of strikes a balance between what, you know, very concerned residents have and what very excited residents had about the garage. I can't imagine going any smaller because it wouldn't become cost-effective anymore if you, if you do tap out the numbers. And it is, it doesn't exceed really the allowable code for height. It's, it's about less than a half a foot above the code, the current allowable height. So, thank you all for what appears to be passing as something that reflects compromise.
And Aronson?
You know, to the, to the point that the deputy mayor made, this has been a long process. It has been, at times, a frustrating process, but it has been a very engaging and a very worthwhile process. Democracy is messy, but it gets us to where we need to go. And I think this process shows it, this has been one that we've engaged each other, we've talked. Sometimes it gets emotional, and sometimes it gets a little, maybe a little bit out of hand, but it's because we all do care about this community, and we want to do the right thing. And tonight, what we're witnessing, what we're experiencing, is really a, an important moment in the life of this community. It's history. You know, we've talked about this parking deck, we've talked about whether we can do it. It's been debated, it's been discussed, it's been studied. Tonight, we're unanimously moving forward with this parking deck. We should all feel good about this. We should all feel very excited, and we should celebrate. So yes, I do vote yes. I'm going to put my end to the charge of this. We, we have a resolution on the agenda which we no longer need. We will be moving forward. We will be introducing next week the ordinance to rescind the BCI ordinance, I forget what number it is. So we will introduce that next week, we will take action appropriately, and we will move forward with self-funding of this parking deck. So for those of you who are here and leaving for this issue, I just want to thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for being here in the weeks and months leading up to this discussion and this, this vote. Your involvement has been helpful, regardless of your views, regardless of what side of the issue on. This is something, again, this is a community-wide effort. We should all feel good about this. The next thing we're going to be moving on to with the multifamily housing ordinance is public hearing. Let me remind folks, give a little background on this, and I don't know if our consultants are here yet.
I see they're up, they're up there along the ramp up there.
Okay. So we can invite our consultants to come up while I sort of give a little background on where we are, what we're doing. We introduced, well, last June, excuse me, last June, the planning board, after about four years of discussions, public hearing, adopted four ordinances that would allow multi, high-density multifamily housing in the downtown area. In July of last year, this council introduced five ordinances, basically consistent with what the planning board did. We had our second reading on September 16th. We had some discussion that night. We continued the conversation on September 30th. We had a very long conversation that night, and it was decided that time, that we were going to put everything on pause and do some impact studies. In January, as many of you will recall, maybe some of you were there, we hired some firms to do, some independent firms to do some impact analysis for us, looking at traffic, looking at infrastructure and community services, looking at finances, and looking at, one of the bigger issues for a lot of folks is the potential impact on schools. And we commissioned that study, and the study came back to us at the beginning of March, end of February, beginning of March. We had a public presentation with our folks, and We had a public presentation with our folks. And so what we're doing tonight is we're going to be moving forward with consideration. We're going to continue our consideration of the ordinances. Before they do, I'm going to turn it over to Roberta, who's, I understand, our consultants, who, again, thank you for showing up and being here with us again, are going to address some of the points that were raised in the last meeting. Some of you recall, some questions were raised, and they're going to address that. Then we're going to open up the public hearing again. As you know, according to our code, people get two chances really to speak during a public hearing. You get five minutes, and then if you want, you can come up again for five minutes. Some of you have already spoken, and so we have that on the record. If you've spoken once, if it was September 16th or September 30th, we have that. But you do get another chance to speak on that ordinance. There were a couple people that did speak twice already. So if you have thoughts and if you have questions about that, Janet's got the list of people who have spoken, Janet being over there. But if you'll have chances, after we get through the first ordinance, we have four additional ordinances, and everyone gets two chances on each one. So there's plenty of opportunity for people to speak tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Roberta first. We're going to talk with our consultants, and then we're going to open up a public hearing, and then hear your comments and questions.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. And you basically said what I was going to say, which is at the last meeting that we had, the consultants did presentations. The council was able to engage and speak with the consultants with their various questions and issues. At that point, we did have public comment at the end. Various questions were raised by residents during those public comments. The consultants have reviewed those questions. They actually looked at the videotape and took the questions that were posed, that were posed towards them. So we're going to start this off by having them answer the questions that were posed at the end of the last meeting, and then we'll open it up to public comment. So I'm going to turn it over to Susan Favati from BFJ. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. We did watch the tape. It was compelling. Thank you all for your comments. We tried to distill them according to who was.
Is our mic on? Can everybody, is our mic on? I can't hear.
You've got to get closer. Okay. So BFJ planning, Mike Rumpf was responsible for the build-out analysis, which provided a lot of the numbers, factored into the other analysis. We also looked at issues of water, sewer, and community services, fire, police, EMS. So I'll start with the questions that came to us, the ones we did, and I'll defer to my other consultants. There was some questions about the bedroom mix that was used in the build-out analysis. As you may recall, we aimed toward a mix of 45% studios in ones, one bedrooms, 50% two-bedrooms, and 5% three-bedrooms. I think we all know, and I think most in health probably is where two-bedrooms do tend to generate greater impacts, including schoolchildren, water, sewer, and all of these type of things. We did speak with Village Chat at length about the proper mix. We also used our knowledge of the reach on housing market. What we tend to find is that developers don't usually rent a lot of three-bedroom units in multifamily downtown contexts. That may not be the case in a townhouse context, but in terms of a multifamily apartment building in a downtown area, we do not tend to see a lot of three-bedrooms. And in fact, the previous developer, both of these four sites, had a total of 324 units. Only eight of those were three-bedrooms, which is about 2.5%. We aimed at a percentage of 5%. We actually were a little bit higher. We were just over 6% of the protected units in our analysis were three-bedrooms. That's because your current code has requirements for affordable units, and units that are set aside for affordable. A certain percentage of those have to be three-bedrooms, and a certain percentage has to be one and two, so you don't get a concentration. So in fact, that is rounding. We actually came a little bit higher than 5% for just over 6%. We came up with a total of 15 three-bedroom units across our analysis, which is almost double what actually was proposed by the developers. So we feel very comfortable with that conservative analysis. Could you fit more three-bedrooms on some of these sites? Possibly. Two of the sites, the Kent Smith and Onkleb sites, are actually maxed out in terms of both of their maximum residential density in our analysis as well as lot coverage. All of the four sites are maxed out by residential density, so there's no way to get more units. Could you replace some two- or one-bedrooms with three-bedrooms? Potentially, on the other two sites, on the Dayton and Chestnut Village sites, you'd be taking away some of the impacts of those empty units. On the other two sites where you're already maxed out for coverage and residential density, you could not fit three-bedroom units without reducing the total units or taking away support area from the commercial, from the use of the traffic code. So is there room perhaps? We think that it's a fairly minimal potential given that you have to take away other units and kind of replace them out. We think it's a fairly minor effect. We feel comfortable with the already conservative analysis. There was a question about rural housing. Will it all be concentrated in one location? And I think it was answered, just to reiterate, no. The proposed rezoning for each of these areas includes 15% set aside. So there is anticipated that there could be more of a housing in each of these sites. I don't think, and I'll refer to council, and I don't think that they intend to satisfy full requirements. It could be seen as a big effort, but I don't think it's going to necessarily satisfy the full requirements. Questions asked about two sites, Kent Smith and Onkleb sites, where we actually did not include the full rezoning areas in our analysis. What does that mean? Well, we also look carefully at that. We chose to include only the areas that we did. We were looking at ownership. We were looking at the developability, the fact that particularly on the Kent Smith site, you had several existing tenants, existing properties, multiple ownership had, including people who were residing there, or we felt that it was unlikely that a person could put together a bigger parcel of land all at once, get those tenants out of there. On the Onkleb and Onkleb site, we felt that the existing office building seemed like it was in good shape. It was well-tended, fairly recently either constructed or renovated. It wasn't one that was left to the forefront in terms of the redevelopment potential. So we didn't include those areas. However, if someone were able to buy up the entire property, develop it all as one piece, you could fit additional units there. We did the math. For the Kent Smith site, there's 0.72, so just around three quarters of an acre, additional land area for four individual parcels, which, if you're looking at straight up residential density, could allow for 25 units. On the Onkleb site, there's additional 0.63 acres, which are pretty close, could accommodate additional 22 units. We should note that our analysis actually included the Breitarama property, which I don't think is actually subject to any permanent development. But the prior development proposals did not include that site, and that alone contributed 11 units. So that is already factored into our analysis. We can ask some questions about what that means. We feel that you're talking about another 47 potential units, that that's minimal in terms of looking at the mix of that, what that actually means, for schoolchildren and other impacts. And I'm not sure if we could actually fit all those units home. We have to, we didn't go through the full analysis. We did a section that we do all of our analysis, because you have to park them. You have to make sure that you have enough covers. You're meeting all of the others, all the requirements. But we wanted to answer that question, that there is potential if someone mapped the entire area, they could fit three units conceivably. There were some other questions on the schools and traffic perhaps, and I'll defer in a moment, but I just wanted to get to the, there are two more questions on water and sewer. The question about would you sewer on TV? And the answer is no, in terms of new, fully new infrastructure, capacity is not an issue. We're already proud of our core. You're currently only at 60% capacity of your sewer plant. And what we found is that there are no issues with the maximum potential increase in sewer demand is just over 2%. We felt that's easily accommodable with your existing plant. The DPW has identified potential issues with the Dayton, Kent Smith, and Chestnut Village sites, because each of those had eight-inch mains, they're relatively small pipes feeding to large mains. So depending on what developments actually pose on those sites, they may need to be worked on to increase their capacity. It's really possible or no, until you know what might go there, and actually do a camera test, and really get into site-specific issue. But we did have the DPW give a very rough estimate of what kind of work we might be talking about if something had been done on all three of those sites. They estimate roughly that the length of pipe that we're talking about that might need to be worked on is 2,020 linear feet, and the cost could be in a range of 800 per foot. So you're talking about maximum potentially, we don't really know until we get them there looking quite, of about 280,000 for all three of those sites. Again, if we know what's being proposed, if we've got a site plan we're reviewing, it's really possible or no. We would anticipate that if those issues came up in site review, that the developer may expect to pay for all or at least a reasonable portion of that cost. And it should be noted that this is an issue whatever is going on that site, whether it's multifamily, whether it's fully commercial. These are sort of unaligned sewer issues that would be a factor in any development of those sites. And the last question was concerned about water, particularly since Ridgewood often faces drought restrictions during the summer. We have a high period of usage there. I think there are those were a lot. We really were conservative in our analysis. What the analysis found was that if fully developed, each of these four sites in total would increase demand by less than 1%. And I should note that that actually doesn't account for moving what's already there on a couple of those sites that is generating water. Demand, for instance, during car wash, one of these sites, specifically that's generating some demand and water, that would be removed if it potentially be developed. I would imagine that might also be a factor in the Breitarama, which probably uses water in the course of business. We also believe that our car owner can announce very conservative because we rely on the state's residential site improvement standards, the RSIS, which is 70,000 gallons per day per person for multifamily. Previously, your TPW estimated this based on local experience as well as some more recent than the RSIS, more recent national standards that use conservation fixtures, which you're seeing more of our apartments. They estimated 50,000 a day. We went up higher number, again, to be conservative. If you use a lower number, that, you're talking about very small numbers here, but it would reduce the maximum anticipated and increase to 0.6%. So again, under 1%, you're talking about desolate at this point. But we wanted to be clear that we do feel that this analysis was conservative. The site could be subject to the same restrictions of any site, even those would be, we know the route. So I think that's water, sewer, and feel that.
Thank you.
Good evening. I did the education component of this particular study. One of the questions that came up as a result of the last meeting was that due to 2014 number of students coming out of multifamily housing, and it was 204 students that the question came up, what was the 215 number, and it was 206. So that absolutely, it moved the decimal places, the access places, so it had no impact on multiplier for multifamilies. It was an average of 0.2443 children per unit to 2.244316. So again, no impact. The study showed, my study, of course, the study showed that this, the new developments would yield approximately 64 new students to the Ridgewood schools. The two elementary schools that would be impacted would be Ridge and Orchard, and came out to a back six kids per grade, six point something kids per grade over and over years. So again, checking with the superintendent in schools and looking at the previous study that I did, who all were aware of that in the fall, I did the utilization and projection study, so it's limited to capacity in schools. My conclusion in this was that this would not have a tremendous capacity. Just information, the multiplier I used was for the multifamily homes, and was based upon 835 non-age restricted multifamily units in the district and 206 elementary school students coming out from those particular addresses. And again, the numbers are negligible. And keep in mind that the, you bear with me a second. Okay. There are two levels of projections that I did. The first level is the cohort survival projection, which is only based upon the enrollment history of the school district. And based upon that, in 2010 or 11, there were 5,753 kids in the school district. The school opened this year with 56,48, which was just a little over 100 kids. The rejection shows that going out, again, without the new housing, the total enrollment in the district would be 5473. So again, we're seeing a continued decline in the enrollment of the school district. With the new housing, the number of the output projection, which would be 202021, is 5536, which is just about the 64 kids over the total of the projections. So again, in looking at the building utilization of all the schools, looking at the building to accommodate kids, class size, Ridge and Orchard, middle school and high school, again, the impact of these studies will be minimal.
Great. Thank you.
I think, Gordon, you had some observations about walkers. But, okay, just really quickly, one of the questions that came up was who would be walking from these schools? In the state of New Jersey, as you know, eligible requirements for transportation for elementary school children, non-special ed, are 2.0 miles, and for high school kids, 2.5 miles. So we kind of looked, I looked at the traffic patterns, and I believe you didn't see too many kids coursing those streets in that area, but all.
Great. Thank you.
Gordon Math, New York Acre, traffic expert. And the walking routes involved to get to the Orchard School would be, I'm sorry, I'm just, okay, closer. All right. The walking routes to Orchard School would really follow South Broad Street to Ackerman. There is sidewalk, hallway. And the walking route to Ridge School would go underneath Garber Square and cross to West Ridgewood Route, continuous sidewalk, hallway, protective access where necessary.
Great. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we open.
All right.
Oh, I guess there's one more.
I'm Tia Muck with Urbanomics, and I want to discuss a session of the study. And there were just two questions that came up in the public comment. The first was a question regarding the economic impacts, other than just had to remove what the economic effects would be having additional residents downtown. And while that is beyond our work, the standard people thought in this instance would be more residents, the more households in the area, the more expectant credibility that you shared with the local. And we were going to answer those questions. The other question that was directed for my question, the study was regarding the cyclical nature of assessment analysis. And again, to you, Susan, we worked very, very conservative when we estimated what the assessments would be on any of the projects. We worked with the assessment office to give the average assessment per square foot by building type, as is currently seen in the statistics that were here originally. This is most typical in terms of multifamily housing. The average assessment, which are originally right now, is $134 in nonsense. These are for units that were predominantly built before 1970. They are non-modern buildings. They do not have modern fixtures, nor are they in configurations that are deemed desirable now to be built upon workers. So that is a very, very conservative estimate of value, just construction costs. A long per square foot would be much closer to $200 per square foot. So we low-walled the income tax requirements of our lands quite a lot. So I believe that. That is the question. Do you see that spot?
Great. Great. Thank you very much. So what we're going to do is we're going to open the public hearing. For those of you who might have questions or comments about the impact studies, per se, or anything, any questions, what we're going to do is just make note of it, and then we will respond to all of them afterwards, so as not to use up your time. So everybody gets their five minutes. We'll make notes of everything, and then we'll respond accordingly. So with that, I move the clerk, read ordinance 3489 by title on seventh reading, and that the public hearing there on be continued.
I'll second it.
Houck?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 3489?
An ordinance of the Village of Ridgewood amending the zone classification and regulations for certain properties from the B2 Zone District into a new AH2 Zone District. for certain properties from the B-two zone district into a new A-H-two zone district.
And I move the, uh, excuse me, uh, the public hearing is now continued and open for comments from the public. And the first person to have the list here, uh, Jana, is there anybody else? No, okay. So for, for the next ordinance, okay, so for this ordinance, so the first speaker we have is Rorick Hallaby. Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I, uh, this is Rorick Hallaby, three-seven-four Evergreen Place. And if I may, let me address a personal, uh, comment to Ms. Knudsen and to Mr. Seaton to say that in the past, we have locked horns on many issues. Looking forward, we're gonna be locking horns on many issues. But I must admit, I tip my hat to you for the courage that you have shown and your wisdom in finally coming up with a five-to-nothing vote on an issue that affects the village. So for that, I say thank you. And I hope there'll be more of it. But I don't wanna have you think I'm gonna be coming hard on you in the future, but it's nothing personal, it's for the good of.
These, these are nice, I don't wanna interrupt, but it has to be.
Okay, sorry. But I could, but just say something to Susan and to my country.
Appreciate it.
Uh, anyway, as far as the apartments, uh, I've lived in town forty-eight years, not quite as long as the other gentleman of fifty years. I love Ridgewood, I wanna die in Ridgewood, not for a long while, I hope. Though, someone, someone in the blog basically said, there's a thing about, maybe, long enough to see the hospital being renewed, maybe. Anyway, I, I, I have felt for the last ten years that downtown Ridgewood has been a downward trend, and that, uh, basically we need more density, whether it's the parking to attract more people, or, uh, public housing, I mean, sorry, uh, apartments, if you will. I know my only axe to grind, I, I have no interest at all in any of these developments, but I would love to see these developments go up, because I'd like to be able to move into an apartment like this in about four, five, six years, whenever Cindy tells me to do that. Now, all the studies that have been made show that the impact on the village would be positive, I don't see any negatives, if you will. I know one issue where I disagree with, uh, Ms. Knudsen, is when she talks about the Americana vision, and I, I, I go more for the American vision, where you respect the past, but really aggressively look to the future, if you will. And I think, uh, these apartments are in good locations, they get rid of eyesores, these boiled-up, uh, buildings, and if we do not build apartments, we're gonna build retail space, which will be much worse to the village. So, uh, and, and again, with apartments, we've been going on and on and on and on, we're years and years and years studying them, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. The designs are not perfect, the location's not perfect, the height may not be perfect. At some point, you have to stop the analysis and then just come up with a decision and move, move on with it. So I do hope that, uh, uh, in the spirit of what the vote before, basically, that you will vote in favor of, uh, helping the developers come through with some nice apartments for Ridgewood. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And one thing, I just wanna note for everybody, I forgot to mention this, uh, again, there are five ordinances, you can speak on each ordinance, uh, if you want, though, you can stay with your comments, and they apply to all the ordinances. Again, because we keep a public record, because this is a public hearing process, so it's up to you. Here's for all of them, okay. Next speaker is Jim Griffith.
I think he left.
Okay. John Saracino. Welcome back.
Thank you. John Saracino, seventeen, Coventry Court. Um, I'm an eighteen-year resident of the Village of Ridgewood, and I'm one of the developers proposing multifamily development in the village. Originally proposed the enclave concept to the council and the planning board in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. I've met with every village manager and almost every council member since that time about my vision for the property, and taken input and advice from each of them. I've maintained the civil and professional decorum throughout this process and maintained my involvement in all things Ridgewood during that same time. I'm serving on the board of the Reapwood Public Library to just about every coaching event for my three sons. I've been an advocate for intelligent development in the village during this entire time, and have developed properties, now housing Parkwest Tavern, Parkwest Loft and Fish. I've worked tirelessly to try and bring a vibrancy back to our central business district during the ten years or so that I've lived here, knowing that living in the place that you do business is chock-full of problems. But I decided a long time ago that you can either be a part of the process, or you can be a bystander, and the bystander role just does not work for me. I know there are people in the village who have a different view about the central business district and its role in defining our village and what that definition should be, but I will not apologize for my view that Ridgewood Central Business District is our defining characteristic. It is what makes us more special than our neighbors. Our neighbors can imitate our schools, but they cannot create our downtown. More than four-and-a-half years ago, I presented a plan to the planning board, which asked for thirty-seven units to the acre, and was compliant with the current requirement of less than fifty feet in height. I never switched in bait, which is the constant innuendo advanced by the opposition, and I never designed the building out of character or scale. I designed and asked for what was economically viable and aesthetically in keeping with the scope of our villages downtown. I have much too much respect for the village and the people who call this village home to do anything that would diminish its standing as the best community in northern New Jersey, and that's why I live here. I and the other developers have been portrayed as demons whose sole goal is economic advancement to the detriment of the village. I find it fascinating that twenty-five units to the acre is perfectly appropriate, but thirty-five units to the acre leads to the demise of the village. We have lost our ability to listen and have a dialogue. I hosted my eighth town hall-style event in Ridgewood Monday evening to answer any questions raised by any resident of the community about what was being proposed, and only twenty people showed up again. Where was everyone? If this is about twenty-five units versus thirty-five units, why not attend the event and talk? I am more convinced than ever before that these proposals and the densities requested are absolutely the best outcome for Ridgewood, and if I did not believe that, I would stop because I truly do not need this headache. I have been blessed in my life, and doing business in the village I call home still makes me proud. I only hope that those of you who know me will stop, take a deep breath, and listen. Change is different, and yes, it can be scary, but what came out of four-and-a-half years of study, debate, negotiation, is not something to be afraid of, but rather something to partake in, something to be a part of, so that it is great and adds to the village, to the best village in New Jersey. Thank you, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Jeanette LaRocco.
Jeanette LaRocco, L.A. Capitolo CCO, four-five-four Bogart Avenue. I am referring to all ordinances when I speak regarding the apartments. We need to have a master plan that is all-encompassing, not piecemeal, as it will be if we have separate zoning. We need a plan that will keep Ridgewood a village, not turn into a bustling small city, as it can definitely become one if we do not plan wisely. And we need to have limits on the amount of units, I disagree, Mr. Saracino, and the amount of apartment buildings we want to have built. We don't want downtown Ridgewood to become mainly a hodgepodge of residential developments. We want it to remain a balanced mix of commerce and residence, and we don't want an overinflux of children to tax our school system. I am speaking from experience. I grew up in Greenpoint, Brooklyn, which for decades was an attractive part of Brooklyn. It was family-oriented with a downtown, it felt like a suburb, and now because of major gentrification, it has become unaffordable, overcrowded, with a tear-down buildings and erect living spaces that are totally out of character and oversized. There is now a major increase of trafficking crime, now it feels like a city. I want you to think carefully about the fact that if you don't vote with care, you could be punishing and pushing out the residents who won't want to live in a city, myself included, and have made Ridgewood what it is today. If I wanted to live in a city, I would have stayed there. And how is mainly adding luxury apartments good for Ridgewood when those of a certain age and others of limited income have to lease, leave because they can no longer afford the taxes and rents? This is what gentrification does to an area. It will make it become an exclusionary, wealthy enclave, which negates what it is now, a village filled with widely disparate income-earning residents. Please keep what makes Ridgewood so special and drew my family here and has kept us here for eighty, twenty, excuse me, twenty-eight years. Vote wisely. Once you set a precedent, you will never be able to go back. Thank you for listening.
Peter Cahill.
Good evening. Good evening, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. Peter Cahill, one-twenty-six Madison Avenue, Millan Park. I just wanna reiterate what I've said before about these, uh, apartments you're thinking about allowing to be built downtown. I certainly wish I was on the other side, I wish I was one of the developers, because it seems to me as if everybody up here is for the developers, and I think it's a shame that the whole Village of Ridgewood seems to be fighting with you guys. I think we're being unheard, I don't think that, uh, the council is seeing what's gonna happen to the town. I think that they're ignoring the possibilities of the influx into the school system. I am a landlord in town, I've expressed to you guys before that I know for, for sure that I have two-bedroom units that have two and three kids in these houses. I think your, your numbers of how many children you think are coming to these two-bedroom units are, are not correct at all. I just think it's a shame. I think you're ruining the village.
Alan Spalkhaven.
Good evening. Good evening. Anne Spalkhaver, four-seven-six Alpine Terrace in Ridgewood. Gonna start off by saying that I've been a resident for over fifty years here in Ridgewood. I have taught in the Ridgewood schools for over thirty years, so I can speak from experience when you look at the impact of the apartments on the schools. To begin with, I'm gonna start off by saying I personally take offense at the comments made by Mr. Griffith and Mr. Halliday. We are a democracy, we have the right to disagree, and that's what brings us here. I have been active in village politics in all the fifty years that I have been here. And I am distressed as to how you are basically changing, permanently changing, the character of Ridgewood. Village of Ridgewood will be changed. The charm, the character, will be gone forever. And those of you who have been foremost in bringing this about will long be remembered. We will never forget you and the role you have played. We are not opposed to the housing, we realize that this is something that has to come about. We are opposed to the density. And I disagree with the gentleman and the lady who spoke over there. Uh, let's look at the schools. Drive down Oak Street, pass the apartments on Oak Street, count the children on the sidewalk, getting on school buses, going to Ridge. So don't tell me you're gonna have only sixty-five children coming, and Ridge and Orchard better be prepared for this influx. Not only will our schools be more crowded, but let's look at another aspect. Unfortunately, parents with special needs youngsters are attracted to Ridgewood, and I saw that in my many years of teaching, that the number of children who came with special needs grew every year. And they made no bones about saying, "We are here because of your special needs program." I didn't hear that mentioned in their comments. Let's look at the traffic. Drive today around Broad Street, and you tell me what it's like after you add that apartment, those apartments and the garage, it is going to be a zoo. I feel sorry for the stores that are along those streets. I don't think they will be able to survive the traffic that we'll be collecting there. Yes, Ridgewood is going to change, we are going to become like Hackensack, or even, or even Teak, because our density is going to be more than their density, and that has an impact on the community. We are a very divided community, and that is a shame, as I look back over my fifty years here in Ridgewood. There has never been a time like this, and I hate to say this, but this council is greatly at fault for it. We have, we pick up the Ridgewood Bergen Record, and we read on the front page, big article, there is a conflict of interest with the council and the development of the multifamily housing in Ridgewood. And that needs to be addressed. They're wrong, or are they right? And that's something that we need to look at. The developers are all for this, why not? Why not? It's to their advantage, not to their disadvantage. The only ones who suffer are the residents. We are not heard, we are vilified when we speak up, but this is a democracy, and in the long run, hopefully, we will prevail. Thank you.
Thank you. Art Rubell. Art Rubell. Welcome back.
Hi. Art Rubell, seventy-nine Ridge Road. I'll try to just address some specifics. These four sites, which I will speak to collectively, are basically now what I would call, well, I wouldn't call them a slug, but they are pretty close to it, they're empty buildings that formerly housed, uh, automotive uses, and, uh, one was, and one used to be the automobile inspection station, actually. So what we are taking here is everything in, uh, in a microscopic look. These sites are going to be developed. If they're not developed as housing, they will be developed commercially, or office, or mixture of two, or mixture of housing and office, or and commercial. And they will not, i- i- in the current scheme of things, where everybody requires a parking lot next to a building, they will become, they will be looking like, uh, a building I passed now under construction, which is in Glen Rock, uh, I think it's Total Wine and Liquor or something. It's a big concrete pillbox with a huge parking lot in front of it. And think of all the beautiful C V Ss and, uh, all the other, uh, stores that could go in there and will go in there, in my opinion, uh, if we don't put housing in there. And the choice we have is, I think, just taking this from an aesthetic point of view, the aesthetics of housing design, the scale, the height, the sculpt of it, will be much more compatible with the downtown area that is left with anything that might come in the future if we turn this down, so that we will wind up with a very, you know, contiguous downtown, it'll be fine, we'll go past these sites and remember in a couple of years what they could have been. Because I, I have to say, I'm certainly not a developer, but if I were a developer, I would consider them the most patient people in the world to hang around for four or five years and not develop the site. Some of the developers are residents of Ridgewood, long-term residents, and the reason they've hung around is because they believe the best thing for Ridgewood is something, some of them are proposing, some of them are just gonna sell it outright. But I think you gotta take this, just, you can't just take this in abstraction as being a, a housing development. And I don't think this development with four scattered sites is gonna change the character of Ridgewood. The sites are not even within eye shot of each other, you can't even see them, you can only see them if you walk through the village or drive through the village. So the impact on the village from an aesthetic point of view is not there. I fail to see us, like, the resident before us is bringing up parking issues and traffic issues that we have discussed, and the consultant, two consultants, we paid for two consultants, have already said is the minimus. The school impact is not there, the traffic impact is not there, it's just there by their numbers, which I respect because, you know, it's their numbers. So I'm sort of rambling off into other areas, but I'd like to leave it at that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Sally Brandice. Gary Negrid. Good evening again.
Gary Negrid.
Gary Negrit, 501 Dorchester Road. I'd like to address all of the five parcels at one time. I listen to the experts, and we have twenty-five thousand people in this village. We have over five thousand students in our school system. It's over twenty percent. And their majority of them, except for the two hundred they counted in the apartments, come from single-family residences. Interesting, isn't it? Over fifty-three-hundred students come out of four thousand homes? Amazing math, isn't it? Now, let's not look at how many units. Based on what the math was, fifteen units is about five to six percent. If you do it backwards, that's about two-hundred-and-fifty units. If you take the percentages, forty-five, fifty, and fifteen, and you can do the math if you like, but what that'll come to, two-bedroom, one-bedroom, you'll have four-hundred-and-seven bedrooms. So let's just say we'll take two-hundred-and-three bedrooms, and we'll put a couple in, whatever the preference, a couple. That couple will have two cars. So you've got four-hundred-and-six cars, because he goes there, and he goes there, she goes there, he goes there, because we live in a society of two-salary homes residences. Okay, so we don't have enough cars in these ordinances. The state says one-point-eight, we say one. They're going to take the train. What do they do on the weekend when they want to go away? So now, that's the cars. Let's talk about the rest of those bedrooms. If I take the rest of those bedrooms, and I put one kid in each one, one, not two, one, I get two-hundred-and-three kids, not sixty-six. Right now, after the crash, the Great Recession, private residential ownership dropped from seventy-two percent to sixty-two percent, which is about where it was for the preceding seventy years. So sixty-two percent seems to have some merit. I guess it works out on who's got enough money to buy a house. But you know why? Those ten percent of people that aren't living in houses anymore are living in apartments. Right now, the construction industry in this country, not just this state, this entire country, is driving the economy, multifamily housing, because ten percent of the population that were in houses are not in houses anymore. And guess what? In the last ten years, the population has gone up another couple of points. So you've got all these people, and then in ten years, we've got a couple of more adults that want to move out. But we now have sense. But I can pay the mortgage. I can pay that rent on that apartment. Now, you talk about luxury apartments in Ridgewood. Let's do some economics. I can rent a two-bedroom apartment in New York in a new building for thirty-five-hundred bucks a month, and I can walk everywhere, and I've got public transportation to every kind of bar, restaurant, and recreation you can imagine. I'm not going to pay you thirty-five-hundred bucks a month to live next to a train station. I might pay you two. So this wealth that you think is going to pop in here, the numbers don't work. I can rent a house in Ridgewood for twenty-five-hundred dollars a month. Read your own newspapers. I'm telling you, you're going to bust the schools, and when they start building schools in this town at three-hundred bucks a foot, you're going to find out that that tax money, I'll tell her, I'll go with her, two-hundred dollars a foot on the taxes. You know what? Ain't going to be there, because that school is going to force you, and you don't have the land or the place to put them.
Thank you.
Think about it.
(applause) Kathy No? Kathy No? Dave Sloman?
Good evening. Good evening. Dave Sloman, 36 Heights Road. Am I allowed to speak? All right. For the last four years, residents and supporters of Citizens for Better Ridgewood, myself included, have been asking questions that have not been answered. We've presented petitions, reports, important data that have been ignored. And most importantly, we have presented the true and strong desires and opinions of the majority of Ridgewood residents about what they believe is the best plan, their vision and their dreams for the future of our central business district and our whole village. First, the planning board ignored us, and now, we believe, I hope I'm wrong, that you are set to ignore us. If you truly believe that your constituents agree with you on the current ordinances, please put them to a referendum, like you did with the garage. But I think you would know the answer. On Monday night, some of the developers held a big town hall meeting-style party to help sell their vision for Ridgewood, maybe answer some questions, too. They even advertised it with a big ad in the Ridgewood News. They threw a party and no one came. Somewhere between twelve and, I heard, twenty people showed up, including some of their representatives and CBR supporters who were there to hear their side. Nobody came, not because we're not concerned. Nobody came because nobody supports the developers' vision for Ridgewood. Now, I'm concerned that three of our council members up there, two of them at the moment, appear to be amongst their few supporters. I'm not really sure why, but I am sure that that's very sad for Ridgewood. Tonight, Village Council, you're set to vote on high-density housing that is too big, too out of scale, too out of character with the Ridgewood we love. All politicking threats of lawsuits, municipal studies, impact studies aside, this comes down to a matter of vision for Ridgewood. And right now, there's a huge disconnect between the vision for Ridgewood's future held by the current power holders in our Village Council and Planning Board, and that of a large majority of residents. You, the council majority, see downtown, from what I've heard and listened to over the last four years, you know, a couple of years here, see downtown Ridgewood as bigger scale, taller, denser, and too different from the Ridgewood we love and want to maintain, a Ridgewood with a more bustling transit-oriented character. You are planning a town center with a more urban look and feel, not a small-town vibe. I don't know what is influencing you, as virtually every resident CBR has spoken, with thousands of them over the past four years, wants Ridgewood to maintain its small-town feel. Whether or not we are the smallest of town, a tiny little hamlet we're not, but we have a very unique small-town feel. Residents want to give their children and grandchildren the same wonderful town we enjoy. When we want more city, we know that Manhattan is just a short drive or train ride away. Why don't you feel the same? To me, that is quite puzzling, especially in light of the fact that Mayor Aronson, Deputy Mayor Puccirelli, and Councilwoman Howe are not running again. It frustrates me to say this, but as kids, we did something like that. It was called Ring and Run. Please don't do that. I hope that I'm wrong, but from all I've heard you say to date, you're supporting change your constituents, the majority of your constituents don't agree with, and are leaving the mess to them, to their families, to Susan, to Mike, and to the incredibly brave folks running for council now, including Jeff Voight and Bernie Walsh. You know, Mr. Puccirelli said, you know, he's going to do, he's going to work till June thirtieth. He's not going to give up. I hope that you will do that. And by working for your constituents, for the residents of Ridgewood, that means listening to us, really, really listening to us.
(applause)
Once you leave your office, you can make your own decisions, have your own vision for what you want to do, but right now, you need to represent us. Citizens for Better Ridgewood, and I, Citizens for Better Ridgewood, and I believe most of your constituents here tonight are for fitting and positive development. I am one-hundred percent behind multifamily housing on these sites. We are only naysayers to really bad representation and bad planning, and we've seen too much of that in this process. CBR believes we can promote fitting development in Ridgewood by lowering the density of the current ordinances from thirty-five to twenty-five units an acre. I'd rather see a little lower, but again, we're looking to compromise as well, which is already a hundred percent increase over current zoning, yet has solid precedent in our village, because it's closer to what is the average that we know Ridgewood is. So that's where the number comes from that Mr. Saraceno was concerned with, is because it gets closer to what Ridgewood is.
David, I'm sorry, time's up. Thank you.
Don't ring and run. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Voight?
Jeff Voight, 99 Glenwood Road. My first question is to the consultants. I asked a couple of weeks ago to do a sensitivity analysis, looking at best and worst-case scenarios of the housing and looking at the mix, and I'm surprised you didn't do it. I was wondering why that wasn't done.
They can address your question at the end of this.
Fine. And my major concern with that relates to a meeting I went to with John Saraceno on Monday evening, where he specifically expressed that his particular building is going to be a vast majority of two-bedroom apartments. So it concerns me that those two-bedroom apartments are probably going to have children, and if that's the case with him, I'm guessing that the other developers probably have the same kind of vision for what they want to do. So that's extremely concerning. As it relates to the rezoning, I have a couple of concerns as it relates to spot zoning. So the area in and around Ken Smith has been historically zoned for commercial zoning. There are new zones which have been designated as residential in those particular areas all around that commercial zone, specifically the B3R zone. However, much of that zoning still remains the same as a commercial zone. So, in a Supreme Court case in 2008, Ria versus the township of South Brunswick, which was decided by the Supreme Court, it states that new zones within an existing zoned area should be consistent with one another. However, otherwise is defined as spot zoning and illegal. My question to you is, can you help me explain, can you explain to me why we're adopting a new zone, a novel zone in an existing commercial zone that's inconsistent with the surrounding commercial zones and appears to go against a Supreme Court ruling? My next concern has to do with the density itself. Now, I'm assuming that this density is being driven by Ridgewood's affordable housing obligation. However, can you tell me what that obligation is and what the overarching plan is for affordable housing? If this obligation is unclear, which it appears to be, can you tell me why we are attempting to address an unknown number with inconsistent zoning at a very high density? Thank you.
The next speaker is Jim, it looks like Odysia, resident of 53 Boyce Place.
Hello. Yeah, can you hear me now? Yes, okay. Yeah, Jim O'Day, 53 Boyce Place. I've been a resident for about eight years or so in Ridgewood. I had a question, actually, for the consultants. Did they ever address, looking at these developments, the rentals versus condominium ownership? I think ownership would be better, and I think that also they might think about, there seems to be a lot of concern about the school system and the amount of students that would be added to the school. And I think that that could be modified if you change your percentages of one-bedroom. And a lot of developments also will do, like the Toll Brothers down in Hoboken, what they'll do is they'll do a one-bedroom with a den instead of, say, approving two-bedrooms, because it's just going to add that many more students or children to the complex. So I think there's a couple of issues that can be addressed, and I, you know, I was wondering if they ever looked at the financial impact of if you have a building and you're selling condominiums, how much revenue, tax revenue, would be generated by those units versus having one rental building, and that being assessed? And I would think that the individual condominiums would generate a lot more tax revenue for the town and would help with the budget. So those are a couple of my thoughts, and, you know, there's definitely a need, there are some older people in town that would enjoy either downsizing into a condominium or possibly an apartment. But I think condominium ownership would be better for the town in the long run. And I think that with the rentals, sometimes you get people that come in, they want to use the school system. Instead of sending their kids to private school, they say, "Well, let's go rent in Ridgewood. We'll send our kids there." I think you get away from that if you have ownership where they have a stake in the community, and I think that that would be something that the Planning Board and the council should take into consideration. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. O'Day, you asked some questions, and I saw the experts taking note, which they'll answer at the end of the public comment period. Sarav Dhaney?
Sarav Dhaney, 390 Bedford Road in Ridgewood, and I would like my comments to be counted towards all four ordinances that are being discussed today for multifamily housing. I think the school impact studies were incorrect, respectfully, including one-bedroom studios into the study was misleading. You should have sampled similar apartments, which will be built in these proposed sites, that is mostly two-bedroom units. Our experts have shown one-bedroom and studios in their studies for Enclave, and as Jeff just pointed out, on Monday, the developers from Enclave presented their plan, and it is twenty-nine two-bedroom units. So we know even today, before you are voting, that the studies based on which you're voting are not correct. They are assuming eighteen two-bedroom apartments, and the developers are proposing twenty-nine two-bedroom apartments. That is sixty-one percent more. So how can the number of kids coming out from those apartments, we can trust those studies? So you have this data right now, before you are making a decision. It's sixty-one percent more two-bedrooms than what the experts have projected. Another thing is, we have heard that these will be for empty nesters, and we need to provide space within the town for our empty nesters. If that is the case, then why don't you zone these as fifty-five-plus units? A lot of other towns have done that. A lot of people have come and spoken here. Martin was here last time, and when he spoke, he spoke about fifty-five-plus senior houses or zones that are dedicated for seniors. One of the council persons basically said that we don't believe in shared housing, and basically completely made it as if you did not even understand what he was saying. Fifty-five-plus is a genuine concept. A lot of the town use that. If you don't know about it, and if you're trying to convert that to shared housing, it's ridiculous. I know you rarely answer my questions, but can we please, can you please let us know what is your plan to stop other developers to build at the same density once these four zones are approved? And John, if you're listening to me, we, your neighbors, are not against just your project. We are worried about what will happen to the entire downtown, what will happen to all the one-acre-plus lots once these thirty-five-unit-per-acre zoning is approved as a spot zoning. Then what is preventing? And I think in last meeting here, Matt spoke that this is a rumor, and it may not be correct, but we don't understand how it will be prevented, that if these four units are done, then what is preventing other developers or other owners of one-acre-plus lots, which are sitting idle right now, or the other apartments, which are fifty, sixty, seventy-year-old, when they have to rebuild? Why would they not rebuild at the similar zone? Or why would not they ask for the similar zone? Or why would not they not threaten that, okay, we are going to the courts and we will ask for the same? So we just don't understand that concept. I know you said that that is not correct, but we want to understand how is, and maybe if we understand that, then we'll have that knowledge, and we'll act accordingly. if we understand that, then we'll have that knowledge and we'll act accordingly. But right now, that is a fear that we have, so we are not just against your project, we are against that, okay, what will happen to the entire downtown? Why are you doing a spot zoning? Why are you not planning, making an entire plan for the whole downtown? So we want a plan for the entire downtown and not spot zoning, or a precedent for future five-story apartment complexes. Lastly, three of you are not contesting the election again. That is your decision by reading the writings on the wall. You are not taking this decision because of term limits. If you have respected the decision or writings on the wall that residents don't want you again, then please respect our decision and defer these important decisions which will change the Ridgewood forever for the next council. There is an election. If you think most residents want it, and if you think you're representing our residents, then let the residents decide in the election. We'll elect who we think will represent us, and let them represent us. If you have even one person conscious, let it go through the election and defer this for two months, and then let it decide. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jon Bonfiglio.
Hello, Jon Bonfiglio, B-O-N-F-I-G-L-I-O, 237 Waikoo Road in Ridgewood. I wanted to share some comments on this and also introduce what I think is a pretty valuable piece of evidence, which is this penny, and talk about that and how it relates to this development. We'll come back to it at the end. So I've spoken before, and I would urge you to vote no on all of these proposals, and for the same reasons I've had for several years now. I think I'm active in real estate ownership, and I've attended many of these meetings, I understand the desire of the town to move on. We have empty sites, the car dealerships aren't coming back, the department stores aren't coming back, we need development. I understand that, and I appreciate that, and I think multifamily is a wonderful use for these sites. So I'm against these ordinances now. Why is that? I think it's simply too dense. It's too much change for this small town, as many of the speakers you've heard from before have mentioned. And I think, as I wrote many years ago now, or several years ago, in an op-ed in the Ridgewood News, there is a, if you're a developer and you see your site next door to you has a density of 35 units, even if you're adjacent or next door or two doors down, I will tell you, as a real estate person who does development, I'm going to come to you and I'm going to ask for that site, and I'm going to hire great lawyers and great consultants, and I'm going to get that density. So I think what you have here, you really are, starting, you're on a very slippery slope, and we're moving to a place where Ridgewood is a very changed town, and I would tell you, don't do it. I feel, and again, I'm in real estate investment, if you can make it work at 35 units per acre, you can make it work as a developer at 25 units per acre. You'll make larger units, you'll charge more rent, you'll make it work. That's your business. So I don't know if I'm compelling, many of the citizens have said the same thing over and over for years. I'm hopeful. Let me come back to the penny. Now, I found this penny, and it's just an ordinary one-cent penny, but why is it different? You can't see it on TV, but I will tell you, it has, instead of, on the back, instead of Lincoln Memorial where we're used to, it has the old wheat, the old wheat signs, and it's, I looked on the front, and it's from 1944. And you say, well, who cares? It's just a penny from 1944. But pennies and real estate have got one thing in common, they last a very long time. So if you go ahead and allow this development and allow these buildings, they'll be here long after everyone in this room is gone. So I urge you, as you think about your vote, remember the penny. Thank you.
Thank you. Nanda Kumar. Nanda Kumar. Kevin Metesek.
I wasn't thinking impure thoughts about any of them.
I'm glad you think I can invoke those powers against you.
Kevin Metesek, 836 Morningside Road, still a proud resident, a little disappointed after that last vote, and life goes on. I want to talk about a couple of things the studies have not shown, that we've heard talk about, but they haven't shown. The first one is that, you know, why do people move to Ridgewood? I see a lot of young people in my neighborhood, I stop in, have a glass of wine with them, two glasses of wine, some more wine, and never, over all that wine, do any of them say, you know, the reason I moved into Ridgewood was the multifamily housing downtown? Think about that. None of the young people in your neighborhood have moved in because of the multifamily housing, and none of them have paid less for their houses because of the supposed blight that we keep hearing about downtown. In fact, what you hear is, it's a great nifty downtown, that's why we moved here. So now you're going to change it. It's like the young man who meets the great woman at college, says, you're beautiful, you're wonderful, you're smart, now change. That's the way we're treating the Village of Ridgewood at the moment, and it's wrong, and our studies have not gone in that direction. The other thing I hear is that it's going to be great for our residents who are going to move there. Well, we've got, what, 1,000 apartments and condos now, something around there? Why is it that those condos and those apartments aren't good enough for our villagers? And if the reason they're not good enough is because they're only one or two bedrooms, or they're not nice enough, will the developers be able to build 35 units in this space that's going to be so much better than the Oak Street Apartments, which I've been in, they're very nice? I lived in the Heights Garden Apartments at Five Heights Road for a year when we were first married, very lovely, two-bedroom. What's wrong with that for our villagers? What is it that's going to be so much better with these units that our villagers don't have now? That question hasn't been answered. The next question that hasn't been answered relates to what some folks have brought up, and that's, I think, recusal issues and zoning issues, and they go hand in, spot zoning issues, and they go hand in hand. With all due respect to Matt, who I've known a long time, and to Gail Price, I listened to her dissertation on the spot zoning, I think what we've heard so far is wrong. We do have an issue with that dinner going back, and I heard, and Albert, I heard your explanation as to why you were there, and I get it, you were at a barbecue, you got called down, you didn't know why you were there. The fact remains, the one evening you gave the explanation that you showed up at the dinner with the governor, at the last minute you got called down, you didn't even know what it was. And it's not influencing your vote. Nonetheless, nonetheless, the fact is that at least three of you, I believe, were at that dinner, you were comped, it was comped by, I believe, Mr. Saraceno at the beginning of this process, and we've never vetted that. We haven't had a study on that. We haven't had an independent view as to what the possible effect of that is. We haven't had an independent view of the spot zoning. So what have you done? You're handing a softball to two sets of people. On the one hand, you have those opposed to the development that are going to file lawsuits, and as Matt will tell you, even a half-footed lawyer like I can tell, can tie up a development for a couple of years on something as easy as the softball you're throwing them. And what you have on the other hand is developers that are going to come in and say, they got it because of the dinner. They got it because of friends. So you're throwing them that softball, and there's no need to do that. We need to have finality on that issue before we go forward. The next thing I'd like to talk about building into that is, as somebody just said, if I have a half-acre lot next to the acre lot that's zoned now at 35 units, why shouldn't I get half of that? If I have a quarter-acre lot, why shouldn't I get a quarter of that? And if our answer is, because you don't have a big enough lot, as somebody said, they're going to get a big enough lawyer who's going to turn that question around, and we're going to be stuck with more and more development, and then move down Prospect Street, move down Ridgewood Avenue, why shouldn't those old, big, one-family homes now become three-family homes? If you can have a quarter-acre lot down the road that's going to be rezoned or get a variance because of spot zoning issues, why shouldn't those houses be turned into multifamily housing too? For all the wonderful reasons that people have presented in favor of this. So the proposals we have, frankly, favor developers and the business people downtown. They don't favor villagers. These studies haven't drawn to villagers, and they're wrong.
Thank you. Carrie Giadano. Melanie McWilliams.
She's saying, I guess.
Lee Warren.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Scott Vanderbusch, 302 Stevens Avenue. I would like my comments to apply to all the development.
I'm sorry, I did that to you, and I can't hear you, actually. No wonder if I keep moving my mic.
With regard to the estimates on student housing, I think you should be very skeptical of those numbers. I lived at the Oak Street Apartments, and I know it's Blaze, and one of his initial estimates did not include those. My kids really liked living there because there are so many kids there to play with, so I think we could be very surprised by the outcome there. So I think you should be very skeptical of the numbers that we're seeing here. And actually, this is much higher than I think the developers initially planned. One of the things I will say is, when I first moved to Ridgewood, I thought I was moving to a town that was already developed, and it was pretty much going to stay the way it was for the next 10, 20, 30 years. I could not have been more wrong. And we're talking about a parking lot, a parking garage, it's very big, four developments that don't meet our affordable housing initiative, so we know there's going to be more development. And we also know that this sets a precedent for other developers, so we're going to see a lot more development. And one of the things I do, I analyze companies for a living, and I thought, what would a CEO do in the private sector? And whether that CEO is good, bad, or average, no one would do it this way. Whenever they initiate on something where there's some uncertainty, they wouldn't just speculate and say, wow, we're going to spend a lot of money and develop all these things at once. They're very slow, they're very deliberate, they do one at a time, and then they measure the results. They say, well, you know, should this be bigger, should it be smaller? What are the negative consequences that we didn't expect? Because there always are. And so I think it's just kind of, you know, it's a little irresponsible. I don't know anyone in the private sector who would ever pursue this development all at once, knowing that there's going to be further developments, so it just seems irresponsible, not to repeat myself. But one thing I will say, one of the other developers said, development shouldn't be scary. And he's right, because it should be slow, thoughtful, methodical, so we know exactly what we're getting. If we build one and it's 35, that's too much, the next one should be lower. And again, we can address some of the other issues that will come up, because they will come up. And one last closing thought, I will say that I really highly recommend that you postpone this decision and let the next village council where the people get a chance to vote to make this final decision. It's too politically charged, and the citizens who live here should have their chance to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Simoncini.
Good evening. Mayor and Council, Ron Simoncini, 249 Bogart Avenue. I've been here 21 years, a lot of people who've been up here have been long-term residents of Ridgewood, I would even consider people who are staying five and eight years to be long-term residents. And so I think that you're hearing from a lot of people who clearly view their interest in the town as vested and informed. And it comes to mind, a lacrosse game that I saw recently, where I was standing with the fans for the team we were rooting for, and they were talking about how terrible the referees were, and how every call was going against us. And I wanted to see my daughter, who's on defense, and I walked the other end of the field, and the other parents from the other team were down there, and they were talking about how terrible the referees were and how they didn't get one call all game. And I think that this is a government question. You guys are the referee. You've heard from all sides, who shows up at the stadium and screams loudest for who? That does not mean you have to call the game in favor of that noise. You call the game the way you see the game. I've been watching this for five years now, and I've been involved in it closely for three years as a sometime consultant to one or more of the developers. I feel like you've called a good game, and I think you have your own opinions about what should happen. I was proud to vote for several of you with the hope that you would resolve the parking issue and the multifamily issue. That is in front of you now. My disappointment isn't that you're taking too little time to make this decision, my disappointment is that we've come to the end of your service and we're making a decision now. I think this is something that you guys should have handled a long time ago, the way you ran on it. Let's not forget, you already got voted for. I don't think you have to wait for somebody else to vote. Somebody came up and said it's a politically charged environment, let's wait for an election to decide how we're going to do the land use in the town? Do you want to see a real politically charged environment? I also think that it's somewhat disingenuous for people to talk about the division in the town and how bad the tone is, and then those same people go and take up referendums and sign petitions to overturn a 5-0 council vote. I think you guys need to be the great referees that I think you've tried to be. I'm not going to agree with everything all five of you do, certainly nobody is, but I don't expect somebody to come knocking on my door and say, Ron, how do you feel about this plan? We want to give you exactly what you want, and then go next door to my neighbor, knock on his door and say the same thing, and ever anything's going to get done. You have people who are saying 35, I'd like 25, people who are saying Blaze doesn't know what he's doing. Blaze doesn't know what he's doing? How many consultants have to come in and say there's going to be about 60 kids? We're on four for the developers, one for the town, one for the CBR, and now one for the independent guy. That is seven separate people who've said the same thing. So when other people come up and say, I'm concerned about the generation of schoolchildren, and you've heard the consultant say, you can absorb these kids, no problem, and maybe many more, how many do we think are going to happen? It's a village of 28,000, 25,000, we're adding 400 residents. I'm not in love with the boarded-up old car sites. I don't think there's anything quaint about that. That looks terrible. It's embarrassing. This is a land use solution that takes the town to 40 years in the future. If you never do another parking garage, it's okay. You've resolved something that's going to be here for a long time, and the threat of what else could come is off the table. So I appreciate your service. I trust your ability to mediate this among you five and take a vote that represents the people who voted for you and put you here now. It doesn't mean you have to be unanimous about it, it means all of us already said, you make this decision for me now. So thank you.
Thank you. Steve DeRotto. Oh, okay. Taking the long way. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, good to see you guys. Steve DeRotto, 112 Hope Street. I'll be quick, I know it's getting late. What this town has in charm and imagery, if it came in a can, if you could order it in Amazon, every town would do it. But they can't, and we have it, and I feel like we're squandering it. And once you squander it, it's not something you can get back. We just made the most dominant feature of our downtown a parking lot. And I know there's reasons for that, but I think we're going to regret that in the long term. And now we're talking about high density. We keep making withdrawals in the bank of the brand equity that is Ridgewood, and if you keep doing it, you make too many withdrawals on that brand equity, you're going to end up bankrupt, and Ridgewood will no longer be Ridgewood. And I think the trust problem that we have here is because I think there's a lot of ambition for the vision that you guys share, and that ambition is interfering with the ability to listen. Now, this conversation has somehow become, well, let's talk about how these high-density apartments won't be so bad. Well, let's have a conversation about how they're going to be good, because I haven't heard one thing that's going to benefit the majority of the residents of this town. We've been told it's only going to be 60 kids, it's not going to be 100 kids, it's only going to have this much traffic. Well, you know, somebody also said 35's not that much different than 25. Well, then, fine, let's stick with 25. It seems like we've been doing that for a long time, and it's worked out well, so why are we making it 35 now? With respect, because I think you guys have served and you want what's best for Ridgewood, and this is going to be the last big thing that you guys do, your instincts on this one are wrong. Don't do this. You have the garage now. So why are we making it thirty-five now? With respect, because I think you guys have served and you want what's best for Ridgewood, and this is going to be the last big thing that you guys do, your instincts on this one are wrong. Don't do this. You have the garage now, be happy with that. You got it. You'll see it as you drive through town, it'll be the tallest thing you see, you'll always think of it. Just don't do this. It's wrong, it's not right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So that was our last speaker. I move now that the public hearing will be closed? There's nobody on the, not on the list, I'm sorry. We are, but we have other ordinances, so when we take up those ordinances, you can speak on those. I guess you have it on the second one.
I guess Jen?
You're on the next one. So when we finish this one. I'm sorry, it's been closed for a while. But y'all have a chance to speak soon.
Paul?
I move the public, yeah.
Do we want the consultants to answer any of the questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to close the public hearing.
Okay, great, okay, thanks.
Move that the public hearing be closed?
Second.
Houck?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Pucciarelli?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes. Now, if you want to address some of the points, I'll turn it over to you, Roberta.
So, do you want to chair this kind of, Susan? I think there were a couple, I got a couple of questions, I know you guys were keeping track of a couple of questions. There was one that had to do with the sensitivity analysis on the number of best and worst-case scenarios on apartments, I have that one. There was one on the consistency of inconsistent zoning, I'm not sure that's your issue, it may be a Matt issue. There was a question on rentals versus condos. Again, I think maybe you could talk to it generically, but I'm not sure that that's your issue either. And there was a question, Ross, about whether or not we really took into account, or Blaze took into account, which is not your issue either, student housing, the housing at Oak Street. So those are the ones I have, I don't know if you have more that you kept track of.
I'll briefly speak to sensitivity analysis, okay? And I think the others can speak to the other question. We view a build-out analysis as the worst-case scenario, so we feel that we've already taken the worst case into account. However, I did do a little bit of another crunching while I was listening, looking at what is Ridgewood's current bedroom mix of your multifamily units? We got that information fairly recently. How does that compare with what we calculated in our report? So just a reminder, in the analysis that you have that we've done, we calculated, in the worst-case maximum build-out scenario, one-hundred-and-seven-one bedroom units, one-hundred-and-twenty-five-two bedroom units, and fifteen pre-bedroom units. And those are based on those sort of rough percentages of forty-five, fifteen, five. It actually looked slightly more than five, two bedrooms. Now, what are the mix, what are the percentages of Ridgewood's current multifamily stock? If you take out senior housing, because of the non-senior units, it's forty-eight percent one-bedroom, forty-four percent two-bedroom, and eighty percent three-bedroom. Okay, so three-bedroom's a bit higher, and the others are fairly close, one and two. So I actually did the math based on the maximum of two-hundred-and-forty-seven units that we calculated, which is purely based on residential density in the zoning. That would be two-hundred-and-eleven one-bedroom units, which is just over a hundred more than we calculated, so more one-bedrooms. One-hundred-and-nine two-bedroom units, which is actually, it's about ten or so fewer two-bedroom units than we calculated in our report. And twenty-three bedroom units, which is five more than we calculated. So we feel these are, especially with the three-bedroom units, where you have a difference of five to minutes, and actually fewer two-bedroom units, based on your current mix than we calculated. So again, we feel that we've already given you the worst case. We actually did talk about, well, what if we just played around with some numbers and assumed that all of them, all of the market rated three-bedrooms, which is a complete impossibility, even if the market could bear it, which we don't believe that the market would support that, because you're just going to be able to fit three bedrooms, three bedrooms, the same number. You have to park them, you're going to run into lot coverage issues, and all kinds of things about being sooner. But even if you did that, and we just felt that it wasn't a realistic number, it would be a completely theoretical number that would never have any basis in reality. We were trying to drive you with an objective, realistic, but the worst-case, given a realistic scenario. So that's kind of what we're staying on. And I think there were some other issues, schoolchildren, other areas.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Just a couple of comments before I get into the next here. Number one, again, in the fall, I work with the Ridgewood Public Schools. I spent, it's important to know, I spent a lot of time with the schools, I spent a lot of time with the administration, I spent time with the principals, I walk the school buildings. Having worked in about one-hundred-and-seventy-five school districts in the state of New Jersey over the past twenty years, I can safely say this is one of the finest school systems I've been working with. And there's nothing that I could do or would do that would damage it. There was a question before about special ed, about special education, was that taken into consideration? One of the remarkable things that I came across when I came into the school district, and I was starting to do my statistics upon it, I said, well, where is all contained special education? The fact that the matters of this district is a fully inclusive school district, okay? That special services are provided for children as needed, but every child sits in a general educational classroom for one part of the day. The numbers that I've come up with, in terms of the sixty-four students, will continue to allow for the kind of special education provisions that this school district provides. So again, all of these things were taken into consideration, that's kind of important to keep in mind. So, and again, just to refresh your memories, those of you who read my resume, that I spent twenty-five years on the other side of the table, I was a school teacher, and I was a school district administrator, I was a school principal. So I looked at this from the education point of view, not just from the numbers. Okay. Second comment, that when you look at numbers, it's very important, be careful of anecdotal observations, really, really important. I did a focus group recently in South Brunswick, where they have some large area developments. And in one particular development, they said to people in the focus group, they said, there are three-hundred-and-thirty-five units, single-family units in this development. How many kids do you think come out of this development? Okay, so how many kids do you think? And, okay, hold on, I gave it next to us, four kids, just three kids, put it, the numbers range from five-hundred-to-seven, the actual number's two-hundred-and-thirty. So again, you've got to be really, really careful about anecdotal observations. Now, having said that, I just want to talk about the Oak Street thing. I did consider every single rental, non-age-restricted multifamily unit in this district, and that came out to be eight-hundred-and-thirty-five. As far as Oak Street is concerned, two-eighty to three-twenty Oak Street, there are seventy-seven units yielding fifty-one students this school year. Two-fifty to two-seventy Oak Street has seventy-four units, and it yielded twenty-nine students. So that's one set of parameters that I used. However, let's look at a few others. Let's look at Durham Avenue, thirty-six units, four kids. Let's look at twenty-thirty Ridge Road, forty units, twenty-three kids. So in looking, and getting, and getting my barriers, and getting my yield numbers, I looked at total yield, as I do in everyone at the school district. The other question that came up is, and I saw, I needed to get what was relevant strictly to Ridgewood as opposed to using like the Ruckus Plan. The Ruckus Plan tremendously underestimates numbers of students, so that was taken into consideration. The next thing that was taken into consideration was the breakdown between market, between market rate and affordability. So those numbers came out, just, real quick. Okay, four, there were ninety-eight market-rate studio and one-bedroom apartments, based on the assumption that no children will come out of studio apartments, I have that number. On the market rate, the fact, the yield factor for them was point-one-one-seven-six, meaning that for every one-bedroom apartment, we can expect about eleven percent return on kids. Typically, what happens, when I look at affordability, the, my experience has been working with districts throughout the state of New Jersey, it's about a one-point-five-to-two-point-oh ratio between yields from market rate and affordable. So being conservative, I took the two-point-oh to go the highest number possible. Out of one-bedroom apartments, out of ninety-eight one-bedroom apartments, we think that the yield was going to be twelve students, okay, for market rate, and two students for affordable. Out of one-hundred-and-ten-two bedroom units, there'll be twenty-seven kids out of market rate and eight out of affordable. And in the three-bedroom apartments, fifteen out of affordable, none attributable to market rate. I then distributed those sixty-four students, over thirteen grades, on a six-three-one ratio, on a theory and statistical background, that the majority of kids that come in are the younger kids. So I went sixty percent to the elementary, thirty percent to the middle school, and one percent to the high school, and ten percent to the high school area. And that's how I distributed the children. The way it also came out was that only two elementary schools would be receiving children from this. So those, sorry, those thirty-five, thirty-five elementary school children, or forty-nine elementary school children in total, would be distributed over Ridge and Orchard, about seven kids per grade. When I looked at the Orchard average class size, let's say in kindergarten, it was fifteen kids. So we're talking about an additional, we did, on average, about adding about two or three additional kids per grade, and that includes going to a full-day kindergarten. Keep in mind also that these increases, these sixty-four kids, are an increase, which you're also looking at a two-hundred-and-stu decrease based on COA. So, and we did discuss this with the superintendent of schools, no one sees a problem in terms of utilization as far as these developments are concerned. So I'm comfortable with these numbers, I'm comfortable with what they yielded. I did include every multifamily unit in this development, calculating the average yield for children. By the way, if I took the average number of kids, I took, the average yield from the new developments was two, was point-two-three-three-four, okay? The average yield from the current multifamilies, I'm sorry, the average yield from the current multifamilies was slightly lower than the yield from the, from the new development, and that's a difference of one-point-five percent differentiation, and that's supposed to be four of the units. So again, I've got a high level confidence in these numbers.
Great, thank you.
I'm going to be very brief, I'm just going to answer the question regarding whether or not we looked at rental versus ownership in terms of fiscal impacts. The long and short answer is, no, we did not. But when we were looking at fiscal impacts in terms of tax revenues, we gave you the worst-case scenario, that there would be very little impact. We went with the average set value of all multi-units currently existing, which means very, very low compared to what the actual set value would be, as far as what in the end will provide the most tax burden to Ridgewood. That would be a matter of whatever the market decisions are, and also it's something that will be finalized in the site planning process. So that's really not for us to be worried about.
Great, thank you.
Is that it? I think Matt?
Yeah, there were, try and bring this closer.
I think Gordon had, there was one comment about traffic in the downtown in general, so.
Well, the only comment specific that I wrote down had to do with Broad Street, and that it would be a problem. And if you recall, when I spoke two days ago, really, the one place that will be a problem, no matter what gets developed at the date of the site, mostly, it would be the intersection of Ridgewood and Broad Street. That intersection ought to be addressed, it is one of the highest pedestrian intersections that we studied, of the ten we studied. It also, well, you've got the heavy traffic volume and having stop signs, and really the behavior has been a hill of rolling stops still over there. So it is, an intersection should be addressed. We recommend that an always-stop should work most of the time efficiently. And maybe might need some reinforcement, police traffic control on the Saturday, that would be the extent of that issue. We also, Broad Street and frankly, we also at Angkor Square, we did find that the northbound left-turn movement, when you develop the Kent Smith site, no matter what it's developed as, could become a problem because of the conflict with the left turns, and that could be resolved with an error. The rest of Broad Street that we looked at, which included Hudson Street, we didn't really see a problem, we can handle the traffic.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gordon.
The two questions that were asked, one had to do with spot zoning, the other one had to do with precedent. I'll try and explain spot zoning as best I can. Spot zoning basically is the use of the zoning power to promote or benefit a particular private purpose, as opposed to the public purpose which zoning is designed for. The driving force behind the answer to both of these questions is affordable housing. The constitutional mandate that each town has, in terms of having to provide a realistic opportunity for affordable housing, drives both the spot zoning answer and the precedent answer. Now, I'm familiar with that case that was cited, it's not Raya versus South Brunswick, it's Finnegan versus South Brunswick. It's a case where, and interestingly, interestingly enough, it's a case where a mayor and council decided on an ordinance based upon comments that were made from the public during the public hearings, instead of going back through the zoning and the planning process and being consistent with the master plan at the time. The trial court held that the zoning that was done, it was changing a commercial property to an office property, there was no residential quality involved in the case, there was no Mount Laurel involved, affordable housing involved in the case. And the trial court decided it was spot zoning, the appellate division reversed that, and then the Supreme Court reversed the appellate division. And the whole reason was, that it was reversed, was basically that they didn't follow the process that's designed by the municipal land use law, with regard to making a determination that was either consistent with the master plan, or if they were going to be inconsistent with it, they couldn't just simply rely on general findings and general terms that were provided by the community in terms of their complaints about the potential zoning of the project. Mount Laurel, when you're zoning for affordable housing, is not considered spot zoning, because the zoning is done for the public benefit, for that, for satisfying that constitutional mandate. If you want, I can certainly get some cases on that, but that's the general principle with regard to Mount Laurel. With regard to precedent, again, you know, the planning board goes through the process of determining site suitability, and determining whether or not, when everybody talks about a master plan for the particular area for the central business district, how to satisfy, because you have willing developers on this, how to satisfy the Mount Laurel requirements and our allocations through development, proper development. They've come up with a number of properties, in this case, there are four properties that they've considered to be site suitable for Mount Laurel development. Each site is considered separately, each site is considered suitable for a number of different reasons that the planning board had found. I think as part of the process, and in relationship to the COA lawsuit, the planning board is still going through the process of determining whether or not there are any other sites that are suitable. They are not using the criteria from each one of these as their test or their precedent. They're determining basic site suitability on what might be the regulations and part of the, part of what's known as the third-round rules, to determine the suitability of certain properties. Blaze is here, Blaze can certainly speak to that process a little bit more, but from a legal standpoint, the precedent that you get from these properties can't be used, it's, each property stands on its own, and each property has certain qualities of suitability that fit the Mount Laurel criteria. They have to be looked at separately, they have to be determined separately. And depending upon that, it depends upon what type of density you have, what type of development you have, whether it be mixed-use or straight Mount Laurel, whatever you have, all those things have to go into consideration. So because this, these properties have thirty-five units per acre as the density, it doesn't mean that everybody else in this village, or property owners in this village, get to follow through with that same amount. It doesn't work that way. And again, Mount Laurel is the driving force with regard to the precedental value, or the lack of a precedental value for other properties. Unless Blaze wants to add something to that.
I wanted to address the question about what are obligations, and how we can be addressing this if we don't know what it is.
Oh, right.
While in one sense, a court does not rule on what the obligation is, there are estimates of what it is. The testing is very vital. Very Sure Health Center has done a study which estimates the village's obligation at over one-hundred and four of the units. The consortium of municipalities also did the study. The consortium of municipalities also did a study, and estimated the village's obligation at four-hundred-and-sixty-two units. That's a four unit, it's not totally, that's just a four unit portion. It's generally accepted that the village's obligation will be somewhere within a range, whether it match the Econsol figure, or the Fair Share figure, or something in between. The court has not ruled, we don't know. But the low end, what is generally conceded is that the village's obligation will be at least four-hundred-and-sixty-two units. If you count the units that already they've developed in the village, which include one-hundred-and-thirty units, built by Burke County, Ridge Press, we've got eight units on South Broad and Woodside, Leonard Place, and we've got the West Bergen Health and South Broad, that would knock maybe one-hundred-and-fifty off that. At the low estimate of four-hundred-and-one, we're still leaving that a zip of more than a couple hundred units. So, all of these projects together, developed at thirty-five units per acre with a fifteen-to-twenty percent set aside, and sale versus rental, if they do sell, it's thirty units per acre, not thirty-five, would produce nowhere near the low end of the estimate of the obligation. Short answer is, the village lacks sufficient land to address that obligation for the foreseeable future. It's hard to imagine addressing that obligation, but I will note that in the first two rounds, foreworks and rounds, for Fair Housing, works and rounds, where every ten or twelve or any units, it reassessed the need for housing and supply of housing, and the deficit between the need and supply is allocated to municipalities based upon a variety of factors. And that should, that allocation is what Econsol and Fair Share Housing Center did recently, based upon a court order that those estimates we prepared. But in the first two rounds, the village's obligation is also not fully addressed, because there was a lot of vacant land. And under the law of fact, when a municipality claims that it doesn't have enough vacant land to meet that obligation, which would take a lot of land to rest it behind them, the municipality must look at potential sites for redevelopment, and that are suitable for housing and zoning in a way that provides an opportunity for a form of housing in that. This is not, the only opportunity that may exist out there, the landlord is looking at those right now, but we don't imagine much more in the way of that. Again, it's not what's in the village, but the answer to the question of not knowing, we don't know precisely, but we do know a range of units, and with all of these villages together, we would still be far, far short of what is estimated to be our obligation.
Great.
So we're not overwhelmed, it's short answers.
Great, thanks Blaze. Thanks, Matt, also for that. And Susan, team, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question of Blaze?
Sure.
So, if we, if we adopt the three rezoning amendments, and that would provide about forty-five affordable housing units in total, about, is it somewhere around that number?
Somewhere around there.
In your discussions with a mediator to try to prevent us from facing the lawsuits that will come on March thirty-first, is there any indication that a good-faith effort to supply forty-five or fifty units in these ordinances would assuage the courts?
Well, number one, just before we go ahead further, you can't speak to mediation, because that's confidential.
You can't, yeah. But, okay, question was asked. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
All right, someone to move the ordinance?
Mayor, I'm going to move, move the ordinance for adoption, and in so doing, and I know it hasn't been seconded yet, I, now when I do anything, I feel I at least need to address the comment of someone who came forward and purported to speak for the majority of the people of Ridgewood, when he looked at me and said, "What's influencing you?" You know, and they told me what the majority of the people of Ridgewood wanted, and then said, "I don't understand what's influencing you," and somebody else said, "If I had one percent of a conscience, I wouldn't even vote on this." Well, I'm not going to dignify the second one with a comment, but on the first one, I do want to state what's influencing me as I'm, as I'm making this motion. Article one, section one of the, of the New Jersey Constitution is influencing me, and it says, "All persons are by nature free and independent and have certain natural and inalienable rights." That's all persons, among which are those of enjoying and defending life liberty, of acquiring, possessing, and protecting property, and of pursuing and obtaining safety and happiness." And I take that very seriously. The other thing that's influencing me is, when the planning board started this, I was a member of the planning board way back, and there was one member on the planning board who I never thought would vote for the amendments that Blaze ultimately crafted and put before them. I don't know if he's listening tonight, but Kevin Riley came around and voted for, he's, he's a lawyer, very thoughtful guy, who I, I think is very, very bright, but I just assumed he would never come around to voting for this. But he did, and I'm not going to read his statement, I have it here in front of me, it's been guidance to me in how to look at these ordinances. It's a very well-crafted, well-reasoned statement in defense of the ordinances that Blaze put before him. So certainly, that's influencing me. The empirical data from this team of experts, that were, were chosen by unanimous consent of this board and acknowledged to be experts, and I will not refute what they've said, I'm not going to disparage our own experts, because I think they did a wonderful job. Their data, their conclusions are influencing me, and the ordinances themselves are influencing me. They've been thoughtfully and well-crafted, they accomplish our, our need to do something about affordable housing, while at the same time, very sensibly and sensitively allowing development on those parcels that are surely substandard now, and we would be in for worse if we don't change the current ordinance. So I, I think Blaze is to be commended for that. So that's what's influencing me, gentlemen who said, "What's influencing you, Albert?" I think that deserved an answer, otherwise the people of Ridgewood might be short-changed by the implication that there was something sinister or the like that was influencing me. That's not the way I operate, I never have. I live in this community, I've lived here for, since nineteen-seventy-eight, I have an investment too, very close to the central business district, and I resent any implication that anything other than my good-faith judgment is influencing me. So with that, I will certainly move the adoption of this ordinance.
Go on, read it.
Where are we at with this? Just wait.
I move that ordinance thirty-four eighty-nine be adopted on seventh reading and final publication as required by law.
One second. Okay. Any discussion?
Please, 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 please. Excuse me, sir, sir, you can't do that, sir. Sir, we're going to have to ask you, sir.
How?
Please, everybody, we're, okay, sir, if you don't, I'm going to have to ask the police officer to escort you out, you can't disrupt the proceedings this way. Please.
Roll call. How?
Yes. Wait, we're going to discuss it before, after, during?
It's up to you.
Because I did, I, I do think this is a very important vote and a very difficult issue for everyone, it's not easy, for God's sakes. I have to tell you that I'm cognizant of the way that all of our votes tonight will alter the course of Ridgewood's history, and, and it really will, though it has changed many times before, our history, both by action and by lack of action. I just want to save Ridgewood from the perils of avoiding decisions when they're thrust upon us. Humans' inertia, it, it makes our, we always think that our environment is just a given, but it's not. We, we're always going to be torn between the comforts of staying inert and the difficulty of action. So I just wanted to say that there, there are three big reasons why I support amending the B-two zone to an A-two zone. Number one, with the results of the reports by the independent consultants, which unanimously, they, they were picked, by the way, unanimously by all five of us, their studies supported the proposed zoning amendment over any other form of as-of-right development. These studies included fiscal considerations, school considerations, traffic considerations, infrastructure considerations. Also, commercial development is usually much less attractive than residential apartments, and would not enhance our central business district. Also, and importantly, we have a regional court order to build a certain number of affordable housing apartments in our town by March thirty-first, as this March tenth, two thousand and fifteen ruling will challenge any municipality, quote, "not to have developed ordinances that bring the town into compliance with its fair share and regional, and regional needs." All of our legal counsel and our planning expert have warned us that we will face costly lawsuits and potentially far worse, court-ordered rezoning, if the council doesn't adopt these ordinances. All of our neighboring towns are settling, capitulating to some degree, and we should take that up with our state legislators. But I don't want to gamble with what the courts might impose upon us. Our eleven-member planning board supported adopting this ordinance with these amendments, to these amendments, by a large majority. And this, I think that the amendment is the best use for the B-two site known as the Bergen Dayton site. The other thing I wanted to say is, Ridgewood has endured many, many, what seemed, must have seemed cataclysmic changes in the past. Between the years nineteen forty and nineteen seventy, our population grew by thirteen thousand people. Between the years nineteen seventy and nineteen eighty, there were two thousand less people. And I think we all remember nineteen fifty-four, when four hundred homes were built in one year, in an area that's now known as the Lawns. And we've managed to adapt and adjust to these things. Incidentally, our school population is down two-hundred-and-ninety-two kids since two thousand and thirteen. So I think what, what we have to do is experience proactive government and understanding that we aren't doing this blithely, we've really put a lot, a lot of studies into these changes that we're proposing, or I, I would propose.
Okay.
So, I think we're voting?
How?
Yes.
Newton?
Actually, I'm going to vote no, but before I vote, I just wanted to make a correction.
Please vote no.
I, just to avoid any confusion, the, the zone that we're working with right now is in existing, and I, I don't know if Councilwoman Howke misspoke or misunderstood the existing zoning, it is not a B-two zone currently, it is, so I just wanted to be clear on that. That's okay. And I actually find that master planning by its definition and by statute requires resident input. It requires a survey of residents, it requires that we embrace the residents and listen to their wishes and how they see the vision of their municipality. And so absent that participation, I find this master planning is lacking a very important component, and that is our residents.
Please vote no.
I also find the development inconsistent with the surrounding land development patterns, and so for that, I'll vote no. Thank you.
In casting my vote, I want to first thank the planning board, because I, I was part of that process, the outset, and I know how many, how hard they worked on that process, and Blaze in particular, and Chris Rudischauzer, who's not here this evening, but anyway, they worked very hard to get us where we are. People of Ridgewood shouldn't be afraid of this. This is well-thought-out, this is not, in my view, going to cast the long, dark shadow and destroy the character of this community. So anyway, I, I vote yes for this ordinance.
Okay. Seaton?
I just have an observation before I get into my comments. We've heard that the downtown is in decline, and some areas of it are a slum, but it's in such decline and it's such a slum, there's so many people, people clamoring to get in there, that we have a parking deficit and we need to build a parking garage. So you can't have it both ways, I'm sorry, it has to either be in decline, or it has to be vibrant and bustling as it is now. So there are a lot of big changes coming to Ridgewood, and although some change is good and needed, change on this scale and all at the same time is not. We all know the background on this housing issue, so I'll be brief in my comments. The proposed density for these zones is just too much. A good mixed-use development at the former Ken Smith site could be massively beneficial, but again, the density being voted on this evening is too great. Traffic conditions that are dangerous today will only get worse, as identified by our own traffic study, especially at a most heavily-used pedestrian crosswalk in the central business district at East Ridgewood Avenue and South Broad Street going to the train station. The intersection of Maple and East Ridgewood Avenues is atrocious, and denser development will not help. The last point I'd like to touch on is, who will be renting these apartments? They say young professionals. Well, not that long ago, I was a young professional myself. I didn't work in Manhattan, but if I did, I'd rather live in Hoboken or New Jersey City, where the commute is five minutes by train, and there's actually a nightlife to enjoy when work is done. Empty nesters, maybe, but I would think some, someone living on a quiet street in Ridgewood for the past fifty years might not want to move into an apartment right next to the train tracks. I live point-six miles from the Hoboken train station, I drove it and measured it. I could always hear the train whistle blasting day and night, I can only imagine how much louder that would be if I lived six inches from the train station. There is no nightlife in Ridgewood, the commute to Manhattan is an hour by train, and from my experience, I have found that older folks enjoy peace and quiet, so who might these apartments appeal to? Young families. I'm not against young families or people with children, I love children, I even have some of my own, but when comparing the cost-benefit of these developments, you have to look at the biggest driver of costs in this and many towns, schoolchildren. At our last meeting, at this meeting, as a matter of fact, we heard that one, one apartment building with seventy-seven units has fifty-one schoolchildren. If these children, if these projections are even off slightly or wrong by only one out of four of these developments, this could wipe out any tax benefits gained by the ratables. If that happens, the only thing we are left with is more congestion, more traffic, and more potential for accidents. I do believe that the vacant car dealerships should be developed, as well as the cleared lot on Chestnut Street. The development proposed for Maple and East Ridgewood Avenues is a disaster, plain and simple. These changes do not arise from any identified need by the village, they came to this point because the developers, because the developers requested them. This is not proactive planning, it's a big gift to those developers. The issue of development is not solely a Ridgewood issue, this is a statewide issue. How many apartment units are being built in other towns further down the line with better commutes to the city in Bergen County? These developments will also be competing for renters, the young professional type, with Hoboken and Jersey City outside of Bergen County. Ridgewood isn't the only place where development is happening, so how does this impact the market for these units? In all of this, there hasn't been much mention about these further-reaching statewide issues, because discussion has been too narrowly focused on just Ridgewood. For these reasons, I cannot support the zoning changes before us, and I think they are a mistake. I'm voting no.
And Aronson?
Yes.
Okay.
I move the clerk read ordinance thirty-four ninety by title on seventh reading, and that the public hearing now be open, be continued, sorry. Somebody second that?
Maybe second.
Second.
How?
Yes.
Newton? She's not here. Puccirelli?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes, will the clerk please read the title of ordinance thirty-four ninety?
An ordinance of the Village of Ridgewood changing the zone classification for certain properties from the B-one, B-two, and C-zone districts to a new B-three R-zone district, and adopting regulations for the new B-three R-zone district.
The public hearing is now continued and open for comments from the public. Janet, do you have the list?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. I just didn't make, I just didn't make a statement, yeah. It's three-two.
Three-two.
It's adopted. It's adopted.
I'm sorry, we're just waiting for the list. So the public comments, where am I? Public hearing is now continued and open for comments from the public. First person we have is Jeff Boyt. Next person we have is Claude Beanstock. No. Just do what you think is the best. No town administration works harder for the people than you do. You really have listened to the voice of the people. I know some people can be tough in their comments, and sometimes may have misinformation. There may be misinformation in the press, in the media. You just do what you think is best for the town. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a legal expert. I just use common sense. Do what you think is best, even if it doesn't meet with the approval of everybody, because no decision you make is going to meet with the approval of everybody. This is a very difficult decision that you've taken regarding the zoning change and density and multifamily housing, and the parking garage and all that. I have great respect and admiration for all the hard work that you are doing, and I really admire your commitment to the town. Just keep up the great job that you are doing. I have no suggestion on what decision you have to make. That you have to go in accordance with the law. You've done a lot of research. You've done a lot of, got a lot of input from a referendum, from all council meetings. You've given people a chance to talk. It's your decision to make, because that's what you were elected to do, is make decisions. And the decisions are tough. They're not easy. And I understand. I have great respect and admiration for all the hard work that you are doing. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ron Simoncini?
I'm here. Chris Kaufman? Good evening. Welcome.
Chris Kaufman, 642 Midwood Road. At this point, I almost feel like it's redundant. You guys are kind of made up your minds. It's going to be a 3-2 vote, no matter what. What I will say is, you guys aren't referees. You're not here to judge both sides. You're elected by the majority and to represent the majority. Every meeting I've been at, the majority has said they're opposed to this. They said they're not, and I just want to clarify. I think Mr. Saraceno's a good guy. I think, Gwen, you've mentioned you might want to live in these, and I think you guys really believe that. But as a real estate agent, I can just tell you with all honesty, most of the people that come into this town come in for the school system. The studies that were done, from what I understand, were done in 2013 or 2014. They should have been broader. They should have encompassed the last 10 years. And you all keep saying the school numbers are down. Well, I got the list from Dr. Fishbein, and over the last 30 years, it's gone up 1,200 students. And in 2010, it was at 40, I can bring it up. In 2010, it was like 4,700, and then it spiked up to 5,800, and then it went down. And it does this roller coaster thing. It goes up and it goes down. So you can't say to me that next year, we're going to have a lower number of students, because it could spike again. And so I have a problem with the study. Why wasn't it broader and expanded to not only the multifamily housing, but of all rentals, and to show how the climate has changed? Have we gotten more rentals over the last five years, including, you know, homes and all that? Why was it just limited to 2013 study of, you know, the multifamily housing? Why wasn't it broader than that? And on that note, and again, I'm exhausted, and I know you guys are, I'm kind of trying to remember what I was going to say. When I'm dealing with renters, and they're coming into this town, where, a lot of them with the families, they don't have enough money. They say, okay, well, if I have $500,000, I can only buy a cape. Well, now they're going to, and the capes are old, they're kind of dilapidated, some of them don't have ACs. Well, now you're going to have families coming in and say, you know what? I don't have to put 20% down. I can instead get these nice, awesome new units with all the bells and whistles. And so they'll be able to save the money, and rent, and get their kids the best education they can get them, and take advantage of all that. And so what's going to happen is, you're going to cause the people that own these capes, these lower, everyone with homes like $750,000 and more are going to be fine. But the people with these lower-end homes, the homes that are $500,000, they're going to get hurt by these new units, because people are going to say, I can save that $100,000. I can have them much better. I can have air conditioning. I can have Wi-Fi. I can have the new utilities. I can have all these bells and whistles, and I don't have to buy a cape with that doesn't have air conditioning, that's falling apart, that may have an oil tank in the ground. So you're going to hurt the lower-end, you know, people, homes that are being sold. And what you're also going to do is hurt the people that are renting those homes, because you can rent a cape for, say, $3,000. But why would you rent a cape for $3,000 when you can get one of these newer homes? So again, the rentals that are 4,500 and up are going to be fine, but you guys are going to hurt and lower the value of these homes. And again, I feel like this is redundant. I feel like you guys have made your decisions, so no matter what I say, you guys are going to do it. But I love this community. I coach everything. Like Mr. Saraceno said, I coach the wrestling team. I coach the football team. I coach the softball team. I see a change coming, and what you guys are basically doing are taking a bomb, lighting the fuse, and going, see ya. And we're going to be left with the explosion, and I'm really disappointed. You guys represent the majority. You know, Mr. Puccirelli, you can say all the reasons you want to vote yes for this.
And you can believe them, or if you don't believe them, then just tell me outside the meeting that you think aligns.
Okay, no, I'm just saying for you, Aronson, and Howe, I'm just saying, you guys have your reasons, but the majority keeps saying that we don't want this.
Yeah, by the way, I'm not, you know, I'm not running, by the way. You know, I have a, you don't have a monopoly on children in the schools. I have a stepdaughter in the school system. I have two grandchildren. One is in Orchard, and one's headed to Orchard, the very school that will accept this.
I understand.
I really, truly take exception to the notion that somehow you love Ridgewood and I don't. So, you know, that's an implication that I think is really out of place.
I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, I don't feel like you guys are representing the majority. You know, how many people came up and spoke tonight? There was four that wanted this. Two of them were the developers. The rest of them said, we don't want this. Every meeting we've been to, people have said, we don't want this. Why is that? I don't understand. I just, I don't understand why I feel like there's only two members that are representing the community, and why you guys aren't saying, you know what? If the majority is saying they're unhappy, why don't we just step back and think about it? And I know you guys are going, well, we've done study after study after study. We'll do more studies. It's our tax money. Do it until I can come up here and you can say to me, you know what, Chris? I believe that these are enough reasons to prove to you that this is a good decision. And I'll say, you know what? You're absolutely right. I'm not happy with the school study. I feel like 64 students, based on a 2014 number, is not good enough. It needed to be broader. And I just, again, I'm really disappointed, and at this point, there's probably nothing I can say or do to change your minds, but I really feel like you guys did not represent the people that elected you, and I'm extremely disappointed. And I hope to God that I'm wrong. I really do. I hope, Mr. Saraceno, I hope I'm wrong.
Thank you. Linda Koch?
Hello, good evening. Linda Koch, 60 North Hillside Place, Ridgewood. So many people brought up so many interesting points tonight, and this is so confusing, and I think part of my takeaway on this is, I want to feel, I know you're so committed to this. I know you believe in what you're doing, but I don't really understand some of the aspects of this, and that's what makes it so frustrating. When I listen to their reports done by these professionals, I know they're professionals, and I honor that, but I find it so hard to believe, when it's so counterintuitive, to think that with 300 somewhat units, we're going to get 64 kids, and it's not going to affect us. It's not going to affect our schools, and a negative impact, and in the infrastructure and the traffic. It doesn't make any sense to me. So I understand, and I honor that. They are professionals. I don't understand that. But I think I speak for so many other people, and they feel, it doesn't make any sense. Why would you want to increase the units to 35 when we're at 12? And I think everybody would be happy at 24. I look at the maltby units in, by Ridge School. They're lovely. I would love to live in one of those when I retire. I'm so sensitive to what you're saying. You have a big house. You're not going to stuff yourself into a one-bedroom. We all know that. But you cannot make the developer rent to a certain type, although maybe you could. Maybe you could designate it for 55 and over. I value the people that are on my block. It's intergenerational. It's interesting. It's what keeps it cool. Everybody, the older people watch the younger people, et cetera, et cetera. Everybody's happy. I don't want to lose them. They have their doctors in town. I get it. You want to live close to town. You want to have a walking, vibrant community. And what makes a walking, vibrant community, the way I understand it, is if it's mixed use. I don't know if this is the right thing for our town, where you have the Village, the safest part of New York City, because everybody's out walking. Unfortunately, I disagree with the fellow who owns Mango Jam. I forgot his name.
Tony.
Tony. I don't think parking is going to save our retail. Times have changed. Times have changed for retail. Times have changed for driving. My kids use Uber. People who are, maybe want to stay in town, and they're not, or they're just getting married, or they're just getting out of college, they're not maybe driving as much. But that all brings us back to a master plan of looking at what makes sense on a big scale? What makes sense? What do we want for our town? We have seniors that want to stay here. We have affordable housing we have to address. We have a vibrant town, town that we're trying to make, keep it vibrant. We have parking issues. And I know that I'm speaking as a person who is maybe a little late coming to this party, but I'm listening. If it doesn't make sense to me, I can only imagine it doesn't make sense to a lot of people. I'm not coming away with this feeling of, I understand, I want to believe that you've got this under control, but I don't have that feeling. And I want to come away with that. So, yes, we did collect signatures. Yes, there's people that are talking about this. I feel like it's being a little bit hasty. I know that there's been years and years going into this. I'm sorry I missed the presentation that John Searns, you know, held. I would have loved to have asked him a few questions. I'm sorry I missed it. But I don't have that sense, I don't have that takeaway of, I feel good that this is a big holistic picture. If I were going to, last point, if I were going to make a renovation of my house, I would look at it holistically. I wouldn't start piecemeal here and there, and that's the feeling I get. I hope you hear it. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Linda Tarzan?
First, thank you for your civil service to the community, and I understand that there's been...
Please identify yourself.
Oh, Linda Tarzan, 576 Highland Avenue. I've been a Ridgewood resident since 1987 and a taxpayer. So again, thank you for your service to the community. We were looking at, when I got married, my husband said, we've got to go look at Ridgewood. Why look at Ridgewood? All the attributes, the reasons why that you're here, by the hundreds of people who've been here and coming here consistently, not only for the beautiful schools, but for the downtown, for the history of the town. Ridgewood used to be the country estate of the wealthy from Manhattan. It was their escape, and I still look at Ridgewood, having worked in Manhattan for so many years, as my escape. People settle here to buy homes. And I want to ask, how many of you will be living right across from or right next to these high-density? I know there was one gentleman right on the...
Pretty close.
So I understand that there is a lawsuit. We could either fulfill it at some level, or maybe challenge it. So I don't know if we're going to challenge it. But the one thing I'd like to ask the board is, when will you consider a master plan before you pursue this high-density housing? Will you consider implementing a master plan? And where are you in that process, number one? Number two, I understand the expert spoke. What is the impact on our fire department, on our police? At what risk are they going to be having to deal with these additional higher-density units to their own safety? Will we need to hire additional staff to address the calls? What's the cost going to be to the municipality and our taxes? Again, I've been a taxpayer for over 28 years, and I've seen my taxes go up significantly. I'd like to keep the small-town-village feel and not lose it. I'm afraid this is what's going to happen. So, number one, I'm going to challenge you, when are you going to put in a master plan? And are you really listening to the people who elected you? I don't feel, I don't see that happening, except for the two council people who just voted no. I want to know, how are you hearing what we, who voted for you? Are you listening to us? Thank you.
Again, we're taking note of the questions, and we'll answer them all at the end of this portion of this public hearing. Bill McCabe?
Bill McCabe, 96 Avondale Road. If I could, I wanted to clarify some of the numbers, so I was trying to see if I had written them down correctly from Blaze. 462 is the low obligation for affordable housing?
Can we, again, he'll, you can ask the questions, and we'll collect them all.
My question's going to be based on approximately...
Yeah, but I think Blaze noted the question. It will be answered.
Okay. So this is, the gist of my question is, maybe my math is a little bit wrong, because I was writing that quickly, but I thought, I heard the low end of our affordable housing obligation was 462. And then I thought I heard 150, we have existing apartments in town, which has a deficit of about 312. And these four developments, we yield about 45, which then has, means that minimally, we're 267 short, which is six times the number that these four units are going to yield. So is it realistic to expect that Ridgewood would have to build six times the number of these four units to meet that obligation? Are there other ways that we could meet the obligation? Can you retroactively, or I don't know what the word is, make them affordable housing, existing units? If the six times is wrong, or the five times, or whatever it is, did the studies consider that? I mean, are we going to have to build another high school someday? I guess they're all master plan questions.
Yeah, they're good questions. But hold the response for now, until...
Mount Laurel question.
Yeah, that question about, does the 45 make an impact? I mean, Matt can address that, but again, let's get all the responses out at once.
Okay, so that's just a general question, and I guess it goes back to the major master plan question. I mean, if you start, if you do the math, it's really scary. And I guess the average person, that's the bigger question to me, is, what does this look like down the road for Ridgewood? And then I guess a little bit to the spot zoning. You know, I attended the September 16th Village Council meeting. It was my first Village Council meeting since, I think, May 1981, when my brother Ed was mayor for the day, under Mayor Butler. But I think it was also the first one for the owner of Becker Auto Body. Remember, he stood up and he said, you know, the spot next to me is up for 35 units per acre? And he actually said, I would like to apply for it, you know? Innocent question, I guess innocent question. I've been there 70 years. I'm adjacent to the old DMV. And to me, it was like, holy cow, this is the tip of the iceberg for our town. So I guess if we have this huge deficit, from my math, and you're, Matt was saying that, you know, spot zoning is tied into Mount Laurel, doesn't a person like this and the developers that will approach him easily have the ability to sue the town and say, yeah, we need to have housing here, because you're so, so much in a deficit? So a lot of things in that question, but I guess those are the core, maybe, master plan questions.
Okay, thank you. Just want to say, for the mayor's benefit, Mr. McCabe asked several questions that were, the answers to which we'll hold until the end of all the questions.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, are we going to have to build another high school someday? I guess they're all master plan questions.
Yeah, they're good questions. Matt, hold the response for now until...
Mount Laurel question.
That question about, does the 45 make an impact? Matt can address that. But again, let's get all the responses out at once.
Okay, so that's just a general question. And I guess it goes back to the major master plan question. I mean, if you start, if you do the math, it's really scary. And I guess the average person, that's the bigger question to me. What does this look like down the road for Ridgewood? And then I guess a little bit to the spot zoning. You know, I attended the September 16th Village Council meeting. It was my first Village Council meeting since, I think, May 1981, when my brother Ed was mayor for the day under Mayor Butler. But I think it was also the first one for the owner of Becker Auto Body. Remember, he stood up and he said, you know, "The spot next to me is up for 35 units per acre." And actually, he said, "I would like to apply for it." You know, innocent question, I guess innocent question. I've been there 70 years. I'm adjacent to the old DMV. And to me, it was like, holy cow. This is the tip of the iceberg for our town. So, I guess if we have this huge deficit from my math, and you're, Matt was saying that, you know, spot zoning is tied into Mount Laurel, doesn't a person like this and the developers that will approach him easily have the ability to sue the town and say, "Yeah, we need to have housing here because you're so, so much in a deficit"? So, a lot of things in that question, but I guess those are the core, maybe, master plan questions.
Okay, thank you. Just want to say for the mayor's benefit, Mr. McCabe asked several questions that were, the answers to which we'll hold until the end of all the questions.
Thank you. Sorry I missed it, sorry. And I hope you do vote no on the remaining ordinances. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sandra Pen Deb. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Sandra Pen Deb, 250 Felstra. So, you know, I was here at the last long meeting also. And, you know, I said, yeah, find change is something that we all have to get used to, not something we can always oppose. But, you know, as you are considering this proposal and, you know, some of you have supported theirs, we have heard a lot of arguments against it. And there is absolutely no doubt that a vast majority of people are opposed to it. Now, the arguments we have heard from you for it are somewhere on the lines of, one, the alternative in terms of commercial development would be worse. Two, per all the expert studies, and I won't go into them. We can nitpick here and there in terms of what is and whatnot. The studies, and I've actually been through the entire document, the best thing they say is that "We do not believe there will be substantial adverse effect." Nothing in it says it'll be great. It's positive, everything's great. It says, oh, based on the things we are considering, we don't think things will be too bad. That's the second argument. And the third argument is, well, we may have this lawsuit coming, it's actually coming down. And, you know, we will be held short of our requirements in terms of affordable housing. And we'll have to do something on these lines, so why not get done with it right now? Now, the problem with all of these arguments is that all of these are, you know, none of these are positive. And when you're considering a change as big as this, I know it was brought up that there was substantial development in this part of the country in the 1950s, 60s. I mean, Wyckoff was a farm for the most part. Now it's, you know, full of housing. But that was a timeframe when the population of this country was exploding. You had all these people, baby boomers. You had people escaping from the cities. Housing was required. So, we did go through that phase of change. And yes, that happened. The question is, from a demographics perspective, what compulsive issue are we facing for making these huge changes? Now, there are places that need these. I mean, we know that in New York, in San Francisco, et cetera, they're running out of housing. I just read today in Palo Alto, they're deciding that affordable housing, the threshold will be $250,000 annual family income. That's the threshold they're setting for affordable housing. So clearly, those are places where housing is breaking down and they need to do something. But we are nowhere close to that to consider the kind of pretty significant change that we're doing. And to the third point in terms of the lawsuit, it's not clear, first of all, that even if we approve each of these things, we will fulfill the obligations. It's just up in the air and we may still have to get back to it. And secondly, there are many communities immediately surrounding us, as well as elsewhere, who are starting from a far worse position in terms of fulfilling these. And they will probably have to answer, you know, these lawsuits before we do. And my sense is, given the requirements, there will be some kind of big settlement. There will be money coming in from the state, et cetera, to help different towns figure this part out. So, I definitely think, you know, the change part, you know, it's a little not great. I won't, you know, go into the impact studies because they're not positive. They're saying it's not too bad. But in terms of lawsuit, which really seems to be the compelling motive over here, because if we don't do this, we'll get sued and then we have all these expenses, we should hold off, even if we want to approve these. Maybe this is the bargaining chip we have. And in the end, it comes to, well, you know, look, okay, fine. We'll approve these five. Maybe we have to do two more. But why are we doing this in advance of, before the whole thing comes together? This is a big issue. It's not just for Ridgewood. It's not for Bergen County or Northern Jersey. We know the administration has taken huge interest in this. And affordable housing through HUD, they're going to force certain kinds of communities to build more affordable housing. And this is across the country. But this is heading towards a place where there'll be a global kind of settlement or initiative. We don't need to jump the gun under what seems to be a threat, that if we don't do this now, then we will have to, you know, deal with a lawsuit. And just the final point I'll make over here is that, you know, I think you are over here representing the people, at least, I think so. And in that seat, I do not believe it's a matter of personal opinion. I mean, there are many jobs, many of us are in, especially professional jobs, where your personal opinion may be something, but when you're representing someone else, it may be your client, it may be someone else, it is their interest that you're required to represent over there. I think of the elective process as such that representatives should. I really don't think there's any doubt of vast majority of the village opposes these changes. And I would really request that you consider this. I know one of the council people said that we are seeing something in politics right now which is going crazy. I think what we're seeing is that people are really angry that they do not see their representatives reflecting their views. And the way people are reacting is by going and supporting people who may be making crazy promises, saying crazy things, outlandish things that they could not even do. But from people's perspective, it's, you know, what's the alternative? That's all. Thank you.
Zhen Guo Wang.
Good evening, welcome. Good evening. My name is Chen Guo Wang. The address is 169 Jefford Court. I'm not used to public speaking, so I just read off the notes. I think there's the three points I would make tonight. First, I myself, by training, I'm a physicist, I'm a scientist. So particularly in the physics area. So what I deal with daily is particles. So only a few particles. So just studying how they behave, right? And just a few particles. So, I mean, if you remember, how long did the physics theory to establish? So it's hundreds of years. And therefore, for the experts, for the consultant here, to study a very complex system. We're talking about community, or part of a community, how buildings, people, traffic, this and that. So, I mean, the point is a very complex system, much, much more complex than just a few particles. So therefore, with all due respect, I found it's very, very unbelievable that all the consultants are so confident about their analysis result, right? I mean, they're talking about only a few percent. How can you be so accurate? I mean, I don't want to go to all the details of the numbers, but I would like to ask the consultant to give us an idea regarding their historic record. I'm sure that during their career, they made a lot of analysis, theoretical analysis. And for many of them, maybe they don't come into reality, but some of them may be. And I would like to ask the consultant to give us the information regarding how accurate their analysis compared with the realities. So I think that would be very helpful. Because I really, just from my own personal experience, I found it's very, very unbelievable to have a so confident, so analysis result. I just think it's too much a complex system to make a so accurate prediction. The second point I would like to make is that I moved into the Ridgewood like two years ago from Fort Lee. And I think like most of us, probably all of us here, the reason we moved here is primarily two reasons. One is the school district is excellent school. I mean, we love it. And the second is regarding the downtown, the characteristics of the Ridgewood as a community, as a village. So, as a part of a community, we want to maintain such a character. So, please note, we don't want to, we are not against the change. We welcome change. Change is a part of life. But we believe the change should be, should not be too much, too quick. And 35 units per acre is too much, too quick. And we, I personally have moved out of Fort Lee because it's too crowded. And I personally don't want to move out of Ridgewood because we love it. And we want to keep the same way. If we're going to change, change it slow. I mean, take things slow. The third point I would make is, actually, I'm honored to be a representative of, so part of the Chinese community. And I think as a representative, I would like to say that I think all the Chinese people, I mean, as a group, we object to this, this change. And, I mean, we hope that you can take that into consideration and vote no for such a big change. Thank you.
Great, thank you. John Sock.
Good evening. Good evening. John Troop, 244 Pershing Avenue. I have a question for the consultants. First, a quick background. At the January 27th meeting, village attorney, Mr. Rogers, described the underground polluted stream that flows under Franklin Avenue. Have the consultants studied the impact of that polluted stream on any development, redevelopment of Franklin Avenue? Whether it's for multifamily housing or some other redevelopment? How would that polluted stream affect plans? And can the polluted stream be used in the event the village is sued by the state? As one of the reasons why the village is unable to redevelop along Franklin Avenue?
Thank you. Siobhan Winograd. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, good evening. I'm Siobhan. My name's Siobhan Cram Winograd. And I thought about speaking at the...
Your address, I'm sorry.
Oh, 274 Ivy Place. I've never actually spoken about housing. And tonight, I wanted to say a couple of things because, you know, there's been a lot said on this. And for years, I've been asked, what do I think about housing? As if it's a yes or no answer. So I'm going to tell a little story. I moved back here in 2006. And I moved back, obviously, for the schools and for the town and for parents. And it is now 2016. Schools are still great. Town is great, getting better because of the garage. And my parents aren't here. My parents lived in Ridgewood. My mom grew up in Ridgewood, was born to a Ridgewood girl as well. They lived on Meadowbrook. My grandparents lived here. We moved them to an apartment. And in 2010, my father had a massive stroke. And there, we went out to look for an apartment. And the most shocking thing was, it was the same as looking in 1978 when we tried to put my grandmother in a home. The difference is, is that my grandmother was able-bodied and stairs were her friend. And stairs are Ridgewood thing and they are not aged people's friends. So during this journey, I went around. If you live in a ranch, I've driven by your house. We looked, we looked, we looked. We sold my parents' house to lovely orchard kids who live in my parents' house. The kid who sleeps in my bedroom now goes to school with my daughter. And it really was very sad for me because to think that in 1978, the same inventory that we looked at with my grandmother was now the only thing that was available for my parents. My parents now live in Wyckoff. They live in a complex called Spring Meadows. It's over 55. They're very happy. I dislike it very much because at a time when my parents needed this community, they were removed from it, single-handedly. There was no place to put them. At the same point, I live between Broad and Prospect. I live in the triangle that is districted for West Side schools, but we're technically on the East side of the tracks. At the same point, I was contacted by Mount Bethel because there was this large discussion of the commercialization of the Bergen Street lot. And I went to a meeting, I think it was 2008. I wrote Blaze. You know, I had small children there, both in a stroller. And I went to Mount Bethel. And sort of the worlds were colliding because there was this discussion of, my gosh, they're going to put something commercial and a semi tractor trailer is going to hit our children as they go to school. I think that was actually said. And I was like, well, that's about the worst thing in the entire world. So this is 2008. We all got together, we discussed it. Broad Street, seriously, the traffic is very concerning. The reason I'm telling this story is that that's 2008, 2010. At this point, I started to get very heavily involved in this dialogue. The commercialization of these lots that they're currently zoned for, I think, would be the worst thing in the world. And so I think it's a great thing that this discussion of removing that use is even being heard. And I think that a lot of people think that the multifamily housing is, in essence, the worst thing. But there are, the current use for at least my neighborhood and the school age children was very bad. So, when you're discussing this and you're kind of removing things in a game of knockout of least worst decisions, kind of like moving your parents because that's not a good one, I think that these lots, if they had been commercialized, would have been very dangerous. I also think a lot of the problems with the school age kids, you know, any mother would tell you now that their single biggest fear of their kids walking to school is not being kidnapped. It's absolutely getting picked off by a car. So reducing the amount of traffic is awesome. The reason why I'm saying this is that this has been a complicated process. And I feel very strongly, I'm a mom. I don't want to do anything to ruin the schools. I've seen the schools in different ways. I'm a product of this public school system. I, it's the last thing I would want to do. But I'm a daughter. My parents are not here. And I feel that our aged population is really being forced out of Ridgewood. So, what does that mean to you guys? I mean, go at it, vote how you want. I think we need some apartments. But I think that we can't begin to stand up here and say that the schools matter more than the elderly. I don't think, while we should be mindful of the legal obligations of COA, and I've asked more questions of more lawyers, we should also be mindful there's a social responsibility. You know, the one big difference that I keep saying about Ridgewood is that, you know, the diversity of socioeconomic diversity is beginning to disappear because the prices are rising. And the COA component is something that we should, you know, we should be aware of the laws that relate to it, but we should be socially aware that it's not such a bad thing. And it might actually be beneficial to honor a certain portion of COA. And then lastly, you know, you're all going to make your vote and everyone's going to say, oh, the apartments won or they lost. The issue that I'm most concerned is, is how you guys time this out. So after you approve it, take a lot of time in releasing whatever you approve out.
Thank you, Siobhan. Patrick Riley.
Good evening, welcome. Good evening, excuse me. Good evening, Patrick Riley, 160 Highland Avenue. There's not a lot of people here at the meeting tonight. I got here a little late. But I was looking at the live stream before and not a lot of people showed up. It's been a long and exhaustive process for you guys, for everyone, for everyone in the town. And it makes me think, are other people in New Jersey experiencing the same process that we in Ridgewood are experiencing? And the answer to that is no. In most other towns in Ridgewood, the residents don't have to rally to oppose applications because there's a master plan in place in all those towns, which is being respected. And applications like this wouldn't be permitted in other towns because other towns have master plans. The master plan is basically a promise to the people of each town. It's a promise to the people of Ridgewood of how the town will be developed. And when people move to this town, they have a reasonable expectation of how the town will be developed. I don't think these applications fall within that reasonable expectation of how Ridgewood is going to be developed by any means. And there's been a lot of talk tonight about reasons of why and how people are going to vote. I think one of the biggest reasons why we're here tonight and one of the reasons why we're even talking about this is because of the ordinance number 3066, which was put in place for the Valley Hospital expansion. To my understanding, this is the ordinance To my understanding, this is the ordinance that no other town in New Jersey has. And the reason why these applications are even before this, before you guys, in any other town, if these applications came forth, they'd be kicked to the zoning board of adjustment. And, you know, they'd have to seek a variance to get, you know, something that was so out of the purview of the zoning of each particular zone. So in my mind, this is a glaring loophole in the zoning of the town. And I am just a little confused how this, all these applications were just pushed through that loophole. If my understanding is not correct, I'd gladly be educated by the attorney or anyone else. But if not, I would at least want to know what everyone's plans are for the next council and at least repeal, have the repeal of ordinance number 3066 be front and center so that Ridgewood can have the check-in balances like every other town in New Jersey has. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. It doesn't look like you're writing.
Hi, Amy Bork, 133 Sheridan Terrace. I want to speak about the vision for this town. I think it's something that everyone keeps referring to and pointing fingers and everyone has a vision, but I don't think we have a shared vision, I mean, there is not a shared vision right now. There are many visions driving the bus. And what we're lacking and what we should have had, and I could say woulda, coulda, shoulda, but three years ago, before we entered the public hearing on this, there was a line out the door and many people asking the same questions. We wanted these experts and I thank the experts for coming, I love, I forget your name, the school in Packer, you're very generous, last time you spent 10 minutes answering my questions on the way out and I appreciate that. Had we had these people here at the beginning, before we entered the public hearing, maybe it would have been a much shorter process. Once you get to the public hearing, for people that are here that didn't go through it or at home listening, it's not a give-and-take environment, there's no debating, there's no discussing, it's three minutes at a podium and the bell is rung and you go and sit down. It's not really a productive environment for feeling positive about the future and the vision that you want for your town. I want to recommend again that going forward, money's put aside in the budget for a master plan, a firm to come in and something that we can all feel a part of and buy into, because right now, I don't think many of us feel that positive about the future here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening again.
John Saraceno, 17 Covington Court. In response to sort of comment that Amy made, with regard to the studies and the visioning and the talking and how this process is done, I think there was many an attempt made, I know by me, to attempt to have a dialogue, to attempt to have a conversation, to encourage residents to be a part of a dialogue and debate, because I agree, the planning board process is rigid, there are laws as to what you're allowed to do and how long you can speak, and how the process works and it's a little bit intimidating, even for people that do it often. But none of those gestures were ever actually appreciated or returned. So to say that there wasn't a room for a debate or a dialogue, we only got to 35 because there was a debate and a dialogue. It may not have been in the planning board environment, but there were many moments where people in the CBR met with people and advocated for their positions and the developers advocated for theirs. And there was a tremendous debate in the community relative to what was appropriate and what was not. And to say that the studies were done now, the studies resulted in the same outcome. The studies that were done in the planning board process are not dissimilar as to the results, it's just that those were deemed to be not comprehensive and not independent because it was an appearance that the developers in some way funded them, which they did not. They paid for them, but they didn't hire any of them. As I've tried to state from the beginning, and I think the comment earlier was, no one came to any of our events because they're not in favor of anything and they don't want to be a part of the dialogue, I personally disagree with that. I think there's a lot of people that want to and would like to, but are encouraged not to. And I think that the 25-unit-to-the-acre conversation and the 35-unit-to-the-acre conversation and the 45-to-50-unit-to-the-acre conversation during the planning board process was an engaged debate. And I was always willing and always have been willing to have the engaged debate. I had the conversation with Jeff Voight the other night for an hour, because he did come and we debated 35 and 25. We discussed it openly, respectfully, and both came to different conclusions relative to our views, but we had the conversation. And I think that the next stage of this in the future is not to go in corners and fight, but to actually, particularly if someone is willing to have a conversation, have it. That's the process. We didn't have, I agree, this did not have to be five years. I started at 37 units to the acre. Being discussed tonight is 35 units to the acre. I was never a 50-unit-to-the-acre guy, I was never 65 feet in height, I am currently permitted height in the current zone and the current master plan. That's what this process is about. And it's a little bit disconcerting to make it feel like or sound like there was no willingness to talk, because there always was. And there still is. I'm not moving, I'm not going anywhere, and I'm reasonably certain that this conversation will continue, this is another chapter in the process. And I would be more than happy to sit down with Amy, or for that matter, any one of them, and discuss it regarding what's appropriate, timing, how do we do it, how do we work with the developers to make it something that is done and keeping? Because I do want to protect the brand, I believe in it. It's why I've made as many investments in the community that I have. I don't have to do that, I do because I care about it and I'd love to try and help shape the vision, and I think Amy has a great vision. Of all the people I've dealt with, she's always been the one, is the absolute most courteous to me, always willing to come over and talk, but there's always a point where we could never take it to that next level to really engage in a dialogue. So on a night where something's already been approved, my phone number is still the same as it always was. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was the last person on our list, so I move that public hearing to be closed.
Second.
Houck.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Puccielli.
Yes.
Seaton.
Yes.
And Aronson.
Yes. Do we want to, yeah, address some of the questions that were raised?
Yeah, I think there were, there were some questions that were raised, Susan, if you could organize around that. And I think there was some that Matt would need to answer as well.
Yeah, thanks, I'm here.
I think Fire Police Impact was the first one, if I... Fire Police Impact.
Can you speak into your microphone?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Fire Police and EMS. We didn't get into that tonight because it wasn't a question that was asked last week, it's hidden in the report. We consulted with each of your fire or each of EMS agencies as to what their current staff levels are, what their current facilities are, their capacity. We also looked, we got data from your fire and police and EMS as to what their current call of is to exist multifamily, that helped us to develop multiplier that you could expect from future multifamily, truly try to get it in apples to apples. So what it found was a maximum one of the proposed zoning for police, a 1.1 increase in calls, fewer than five a week, basically. For fire, it found a maximum increase of 2.6% in calls, which they worked out to about just over one per week. And for EMS, for Ridgewood, RES, Village Village Postal Services, I think it worked out to 2.9% increase in calls, which I think was about 0.8 a week. And so we ran those numbers by various agencies and all of them said that they don't feel that would result in any higher conditional staff or changes to facilities. So that's Fire Police, EMS. There was a question about how can we be so confident and are members, you know, we have our professional judgment and our experience to guide us, are we infallible or are we human? That doesn't mean that we are saying what we have studied will most certainly happen with 100% certainty. Could we be wrong? Perhaps. We can only give you our objective, professional judgment, I think that's what we're asked to do. We've only done it and we've been so conservative and so near to frauds. We've tried to err on the side of caution, on the side of, you know, overcompensating in lots of different ways, and we've tried to be clear about where that has been. We've tried to give you all the information that you need to make a decision. And I think there was one other question about the underground fluid stream. In all honesty, that was outside of spoken for our study, we were only looking at your water and sewer in terms of your village facilities. I'm not very knowledgeable about the fluid stream. I can only assume that to the extent that it affects future development, that would be studied according to site plan and if it needs to be cleaned up, that'd be something that would be addressed with the developer.
Great. Great. Thank you.
I just think that, just wanted to, there was some comment about the numbers coming from the district. These are the ASSA numbers, those are the official numbers of the district, they were provided to me by the school district and these are the numbers registered for the state. In 2011, there were 5,753 students in the district. In 2015-16, there's no number as of this act of 15, in 2015, there were 5648. Those are the additional numbers, I heard something that there were 4,700 numbers, they've got, no, these are the numbers given to me and certified by the school district and I think it's kind of important to know. The second thing is that the 64 students are based upon not 300 units, but 247.
Ross. Mr. Haber, what was the first number from the year 2011?
2010-11.
Total number.
That was the base year of the study. It was 5,753.
Thanks.
And the current year, October, as of October of 2015, were 5648. And the study is a current year study, it's 1415, it's 21516.
Thank you.
Anything else down there?
I think there was a question on other ways of meeting the obligation.
Or, can I just rephrase that? What I thought, the way I heard that question was, well, since 45 is just a dent in the deficiency, why are we, oh, I don't want to, but anyway, he was questioning, it was if it's just a dent, then what is it accomplishing?
I think there was some clarification that was asked with regard to the numbers.
Microphone.
I think, sorry. I think there was some clarification that was asked with regard to the allocation numbers, how many we have, how many are being proposed or were the allocations are being argued by the, in the lawsuit. Now, maybe Blaze, you can speak to that first.
Briefly.
You can go on from there.
He was correct, 462 is the low end of the range of obligations that is being projected by two different entities. The high end is over 1,100. Why the state in its infinite wisdom feels that the villages in Ridgewood can address that number is something you need to ask your legislative officers. So I think those kinds of numbers are obviously excessive. Especially after first two rounds, it was shown that the villages cannot address numbers anywhere near that. As to what the village will do to respond to those, what the village is required to do is to zone vacant land as developable and suitable, that provides reasonable opportunity for affordable housing. If zoning that does not address that obligation, it won't. The only of these properties that are currently reported council, one is vacant, that's the one on Chestnut Street, then the village must look at already developed sites that may be developed in the near future. And if they're appropriate for housing, they must place an old lay zone on those that says if and when they redevelop, then they must be developed for housing. Even that will address the number and the state, in this case, I'm not joking, but I just say they do in their wisdom recognize that that may happen, in which case, the obligation remains out there forever. And as each round of activity comes around again and look at it again and says, okay, how things change, can that obligation now be addressed? Right now, we have not yet and will not be, even our second round of obligation, which is 229 units of affordable housing. In addition to that 229 units of affordable housing, the state in the third round, or at least the E-council, has projected an additional 229 plus 4 units of rehab, as I gave it 462. Fair share numbers are far, far higher than that. So as to what will be done, I think what has to be done by law is that we will look at properties that, like these, are either vacant or vacant buildings or underperforming sites and see whether they're suitable for housing development. If they're not suitable, we're not going to zone them. If they are suitable and they're likely to be developed, then we're required to zone an appropriate density. But frankly, those opportunities are limited and as to the domino effect, I don't believe the law requires us to zone active viable properties that are not going to be developed for this type of housing. I won't say that it's important, actually, someone might try to develop more than we're expecting, but that's all that happened. But the general idea is that these are all properties that are viable candidates in the near future, when I say viable, an appropriate location, an appropriate density, and so on and so forth. And that's...
Thank you.
Can you answer one more question, too? Sorry. One of the gentlemen in the audience said, "This is only happening in Ridgewood," he doesn't see it happening anywhere else.
I know.
And I know that it is happening everywhere else, but I'd like you to speak to that if you could.
Well, I have worked with two of these towns, I worked with this one in study and this value in Marston, and I'm sure it was happening there. And they've built hundreds of farmhouses in Ridgewood and they have an initiation in that town as well. And they just adopted their housing plan last week. But their town's called, let's say, go to the mountain cap, go to Morrison, they're somewhere in Burke County, they're allowed to have to deal with this because of this report decision from Europe. It's not a big deal.
Great. Thank you.
And just to further what Blaze has said, the lawsuit that we're involved in leads to the determination by the court as how we come close to meeting that allotment or whatever that allotment number's going to be. So I think it's basically understood that we'll realistically never be able to develop all the numbers that we are going to be, they may require us to do. But we've, we fully expect, and the court's going to make the decision, as to whether or not our plan is one that can be approved. The issue with regard to our master plan, and somebody brought up the fact that we don't have a master plan, well, the court granted us immunity from developer suits and granted us that as a result of the filing and what we've been doing over the past number of years since the Mount Laurel case and the constitutional mandate first came into play. Based upon the attention that the village has given to not only its Mount Laurel requirement but to its master plan, the court decided that we've been acting in good faith and provided us with immunity from developer suits. Someone brought up the developer suits and what's that, we're just worried about a little cost. It's not the cost that we'd be concerned about, it's the prospect that a developer will come in and seek a density much higher than we might be willing to give and because we haven't satisfied the procedural and substantive requirements of providing that realistic opportunity for affordable housing, a court could grant them the ability and the authority above what we might think to be the appropriate zoning to build a development with Mount Laurel housing at a density much higher than anything that we would have in the borough, or in the village, rather. And that's why it is so important that, number one, we maintain the immunity that we have right now, and number two, that we provide what we think is the realistic opportunity for that development of affordable housing. Court's gonna look and see what we've done, how many units we're talking about and what the vacant land is and how we have dealt with what Blaze just kind of described as overlay zoning. And it's gonna make its determination as to whether or not we've done what we can do. That's what the housing element of the master plan is. Right now, the planning board is considering the housing element and will act, I guess in the next month or two, to adopt the housing element, that then must come before the council that needs to be, also needs to be ratified by the council. These ordinances will probably go into that housing element, I can't say what the planning board's going to do, but these ordinances will probably go into that housing element. And that's really already predicted by the fact that the planning board amended the master plan to include these. So in terms of the fact that we, you know, I'm saying we don't have a master plan, I think from the land use standpoint and land use and planning standpoint, we have a master plan that's required by the municipal land use law. There may be another master plan that people were talking about that may be this, you know, this idea or concept of a vision of where we see we're gonna be in 10, 15, 20 years. Well, the master plan that we do for the municipal land use law is supposed to be that policy and they may, that may not satisfy everybody's ideas about what might be a vision, but that is the legal requirement that we're, we must do in order to preserve our ability to zone the way to preserve our ability to zone the way we see fit. One of the other questions that came up was this contamination, that a gentleman had raised the contaminated flume that I had spoken about several weeks ago. As far as I know, and I'm pretty certain about this, this flume is on the south side of Franklin Avenue, and comes down from the properties along the south side. It doesn't go across to the north side of Franklin Avenue. So I am, I'm fairly certain, and I could, I would need to talk to our engineer about that, but I'm fairly certain that the Kent Smith site, the properties on Chestnut, and properties at, at Maple and Ridgewood Avenue, and on Broad Street are not going to be affected by that. But we can find that information out from the village engineer. And then the last question, or the last issue that somebody brought up is ordinance number thirty-sixty-six. We've been up and down this several times. Ordinance thirty-sixty-six did not create any right that did not exist already under the state statute. What ordinance thirty-sixty-six did was that when Valley Hospital first proposed its expansion, its renew project back in the two thousand eight era, it allowed the village to charge for the expert fees and, and other needed fees to be able to review this, that application. Under the sta, under the state statute, property owners had the right and the ability to go before a planning board and ask for an amendment to the master plan. That always existed. It didn't create this issue. What created this issue, I, I believe, and I've called it a perfect storm before, is that several properties became either vacant, weren't being used for the purposes that they were used for before, but approached at the same time the need to redevelop. And the planning board dealt with them in the way that they saw fit, considered them because they were in the central business district, and considered them together, and made the decision and determination that it did. The fact that they came about, and their, the planning board's decision came maybe two months after the Supreme Court's decision on COA, because the legislature and the governor's office didn't act on the affordable housing regulations and rules. You know, I can't say that anybody had that in mind when they first proposed all these things, but the fact that they came about that, in that same time period, was terribly coincidental. And that is really, the one thing I think that separates us from a lot of the other towns, is that these developments came along at that time when the Supreme Court decision came down. I've argued that in front of the court, that we have been, we've been faced with a very unique situation with regard to these developments, and the timing of the Supreme Court decision. And based upon that, one of the reasons why we need more time and have gotten extensions is because we've had to deal with those things. So that is the unique aspect of what's going on in Ridgewood as opposed to some of the other towns. But every town, four hundred and sixty-five municipalities, had to provide a housing element to conform with the requirements of the Mount Laurel decision. And everybody's going through this. Some, some counties, some towns in some counties are getting hit a lot worse, harder than we are. And, you know, so far, in Burton County, the, the courts have been very reasonable in their approach as far as we're concerned.
Okay. In, in making this motion, I want to answer one last question very briefly here at twelve oh five on Thursday morning. And that is that somehow this is all being done as a defensive measure. Speaking for myself, that's not the case. I cited other reasons, which I won't repeat, but I, I do want to say that when I, when I ran, I said I stand for the diversity of housing types in this community, and I included the possibility of high-end, high-density housing as one of those. So for me, this is not a defensive measure. I happen to see this as a positive, a positive development in the world of Ridgewood zoning. So with that, I move that ordinance thirty-four ninety be adopted on seventh reading and final publication as required by law.
I would second it.
Did you second it?
I'll second it again.
Okay.
Yes. Howk?
Yes.
Newton?
Are we doing our explanations as we go along?
Yeah.
If, if, if we need to.
Well, yeah. I, I mean, each one should be considered, you know, even though the same principle applies. But I just want to reiterate that something will be built on this site within the next four years, because they have the right to build something fairly compatible, I think, to the proposed amendment, in the sense that the proposed amendment allows for four stories, and the existing zoning allows for three stories high if it's office or medical, and three stories high if it's commercial. So, and, and given all the previous reasons why we need, we need more residential instead of more commercial, and we have to fulfill our affordable housing requirements. Yes.
Newton?
So I'm actually voting no on this. Part of the reason is, part of the primary objective of zoning in the central business district is to foster and enhance the retail and business environment. And the language in this particular ordinance actually stands to find residential encroaching into the central business district and potentially undermining that effort. So I am, and I also just actually want to make one other point. Repeatedly tonight, and it's come up in the past, that it would be beneficial to have fifty-five and over housing. And this was something that was proposed several times, but rejected by developers. So I just, that has come up also, and I really just want to have clarification on that. But in any event, I vote no.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Seaton?
No.
And Aronson?
Yes. I move the clerk read ordinance thirty-four ninety-one by title on seventh reading and public hearing thereon be, be continued.
I would second.
Second.
Howk?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance thirty-four ninety-one?
And, okay, yes. An ordinance of the village of Ridgewood changing the zone classification as certain properties from the C-zone district to a new CR-zone district, and adopting regulations for the new CR-zone district.
Public hearing is now continued and open for comments from the public. We have two names on the list. Linda Tarzian.
You don't have to, right?
Yeah, you can walk, Linda. It's okay.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Linda Tarzian, five seven six Highland Avenue. I just want to reiterate something that's been said a few times tonight. And again, I'm not on the police force, and I'm not part of the expert testimony. But for someone who drives in and through Ridgewood, and lives in Ridgewood, like I said, for twenty-nine years, I am very concerned about the increased density and the traffic, foot, and especially driving, coming on at Ridgewood and Broad, Franklin and Broad, and Ridgewood and Maple. If any of you who live and work or drive through town, it is busy, and it's going to get a lot busier through the construction process of whatever does take place, which we all recognize something has to happen. So that's number one, my concern there. And the strain it's going to put on the resources. I understand that they said EMS, fire, and police can handle it. But as a citizen, again, we chose Ridgewood because it was a slower pace, and I'm just thinking about the stress of, of waiting in line to, to pass through all of these different points. Number two, as we age, I'm going to start to think about where will I live? And I do like the thought of plus fifty-five. We may be able to do something there to serve the needs of ourselves, but not have to go to the higher numbers again. And then, can any of these, like an over fifty-five, meet the affordable care requirement? Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Janice Willett?
Evening. Thanks for letting me speak. Janice Willett, two oh seven Prospect Street. I really didn't intend to speak tonight, but so many people have accused you of not representing the majority of voters in this town, that I felt obliged to stand up here and say that actually you are representing me. I do support the multifamily housing. I look forward to living in one, one of these years, and I wish that there had been something like this for my parents, like Siobhan. I had to look for something for my parents about ten years ago, after my father had his stroke. And there was really nothing appropriate for them. They ended up in the Kentshire in Midland Park. These are really hard decisions. I think they're partly hard because we're looking at so many of them all at the same time. And the reason that we're looking at so many is because we've postponed making a decision on these things for such a long time. We've, we've commissioned more studies, we've hesitated, and, and now we're looking at a lot of units at once. So that seems problematic. I think if we had put one in five years ago and seen how well it went, we would have said, oh, this is great. It creates, and there's, you know, people talked about not mentioning positives. There's, there would be increased foot traffic in town for our businesses. You know, it would just, it would create a more vibrant central business district, which is something I think we all support. So, you know, if we had put in one and seen the, the good impact, we would have said, oh, let's do another one. This is great. And as far as the affordable housing, you know, we're, I think we're trying to control our own destiny here, because the state could come in and say, look, thirty-five, you know, thirty-five density is not enough. It could, it should be fifty. And then we'll have a lot of units that have, you know, way more people in them than, than we might have liked for the character of our town. So I give you a lot of credit. We're not privy to everything that you know about these issues, but I give you a lot of credit for representing us and, and sifting through all the information and, and trying to come to a good decision about this. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
So just to actually, one more time, I just want to reiterate that the, the issue of fifty-five and over housing was raised. It was presented as an option, and it was soundly rejected by the developers through this process. So, and not at the planning board level, but in one particular instance. So I just want to point that out again. But thanks.
And that was, those are the only two speakers on that. So, where am I? I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Howk?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes. I move that ordinance thirty-four ninety-one be adopted on seventh reading and final publication as required by law.
Second. Howk?
Yes.
Newton?
No.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Seaton?
No.
And Aronson?
Yes. I move the clerk read ordinance thirty-four ninety-two by title on seventh reading and a public hearing thereon be open.
Second.
Be continued.
Howk?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance thirty-four ninety-two?
An ordinance of the village of Ridgewood amending the zone regulations for the C-zone district.
Public hearing is now continued and open for comment from the public. Do you have anybody, Janet? All right. So I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Howk?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes. I move that ordinance thirty-four ninety-two be adopted on seventh reading and final publication as required by law.
Second. Howk?
Yes.
Newton?
No.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Seaton?
No.
And Aronson?
Yes. I move the clerk read ordinance thirty-four ninety-three by title on seventh reading and a public hearing thereon be, be continued.
Second.
Howk?
Yes.
Newton?
Newton.
Yes, sorry.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance thirty-four ninety-three?
An ordinance of the village of Ridgewood amending various definitions and regulations pertaining to inclusionary development, residential and non-residential zones, yards abiding railroads, number of principal buildings, parking beneath buildings, signs in residential zone districts, outdoor storage in residential zones, display of motor vehicles for sale, and recreational facilities for residential uses.
Public hearing is now continued and open for comments from the public. Janet? Linda Tarzian?
Oh.
Take your time.
Linda Tarzian, five seventy-six Highland Avenue. So, I haven't said it outright, but I still don't think everyone is representing the town. But I understand there's a fiduciary or responsibility of you as selected officials. Is there any way that, since these seem to be passing, that it can be overturned in the future?
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. We don't have anybody else on the, we don't have anybody else signed up, so. No, the, no. I'm sorry. So, but then we have different rules for everybody. We just, I don't want to, there were other people earlier that we turned away that wanted to speak.
Sure. That is true.
So the, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Howk?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
And Aronson?
I move that ordinance thirty-four ninety-three be adopted on seventh reading and final publication as required by law.
Second. Howk?
Yes.
Newton?
No.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Seaton?
No.
And Aronson?
Yes.
Now, we have one professional services-
We have one resolution?
Yep, we do.
Okay, can I just, Paul?
Sure.
I think that can, it seems to me that we can let the consultants leave at this point.
Yes.
Without the gratitude.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seriously, thank you not just for being here tonight, and being here for the last presentation, but doing really stellar work, and very comprehensive, very responsive. And you apparently work really well as a team, so.
Yeah.
Really appreciate it, though.
I second that. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it was well written, too.
Okay, the following resolution, number sixteen dash eighty-eight, will be adopted by consent agenda with one vote by the village council. It will be read by title only, or professional services contract water allocation study.
I move the adoption of, of the resolution.
Second. Howk?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn the special public meeting and reconvene the work session.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
All right. So now we're, manager's report, please.
So had I known that we were going to end this early, well, yes, I would have prepared a manager's report.
That's okay.
So-
We can wait till next week.
In deference, I didn't, we didn't put together a manager's report. I just want to mention a couple of things. Village Hall is closed on Friday, for Good Friday. This weekend, there are chamber events, Easter in the park, Saturday, March, this, this, this Sat, this Saturday? Saturday or Sunday?
Saturday.
From eleven to two, and then breakfast with the Easter Bunny at the office from eight-thirty to ten-thirty. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Would any council members like to make a report?
I actually am going to just add a very quick piece online. I'm not, I won't read my whole, but the planning board is, many may have read in the newspaper, were attending last week's meeting, reached a settlement with the Valley Hospital. The settlement was signed by Judge Frish in pursuant to it with Springwood's case law. Public hearings will be held March thirtieth and thirty-first, April fourth and fifth. All meetings will begin at seven-thirty. I urge everyone to check the village website for the location, although they're usually at Village Hall. Not sure that there may or may not be some change of venue. So we'll make that announcement again next week, and it'll be up on the website. So just so everyone knows. Thanks.
Okay, for my part, I just want to thank members of the Ridgewood Police Department who are here. We're very grateful that you, you were, you were here, and also even more grateful that, you know, your, your presence, while, while it was great, was really not, you know, not needed. But thank you, thank you very much for your-
Thank, yes, thank you.
For your help and for all that you do.
Alber.
Any, oh, yes. And a lot of work went in, a lot of work was, Dylan, Dylan is, Dylan, are you here? I saw you here.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's setting up, you know, basically moving Village Hall and all of its audiovisual production capacity to this location. And thank you very much, Dylan, and you, sir, thank you. What, what is your name?
Thanks both.
What?
It says, thanks both. Doug.
Okay, thank you, Doug. So thank you, all, all of you, for all the, all the help you've given us in making the meeting at this location run so smoothly.
Thanks Heather for the water.
And Heather, Heather-
Thanks Heather for the water.
You moved your whole operation here, too, including the supply of, of water.
Water.
Any other council people want to make any reports? No?
I just wanted to say that we had a good meeting on Monday. The Shade Tree Commission and Ridgewood Environmental Advisory Committee met in the senior lounge and discussed different things going forward with Shade Trees and the village. And I'd just like to thank Director of Parks and Recreation, Tim Cronin, for helping out with the presentation. He had a good part. And the village engineer, Chris Ruffizhauser, for his participation in the, in the, in the discussion. And the Chair of Shade Tree Commission, Monica Buser, and Shade Tree member, George Wol- Shade Tree member, George Wolson, who all gave a really great presentation. There was about 18 people there who asked a lot of good questions, and it was a very informative discussion, so thank you for everyone with that, and that's all I have.
Only thing I'd like to mention is the author's luncheon by Friends of the Library last Wednesday night, Wednesday lunchtime. There were 400 people at least there, and it was a huge success. By all accounts, probably the best author's luncheon they've ever hosted. And I just want to thank Paul McCarthy for organizing it, and the two chairwomen, who I don't remember their names, but it was, it was an amazing event. That's it.
And the only thing I have is, you know, we always talk about, you know, this community has a bunch of extraordinary people, extraordinary organizations. I had the opportunity to go to 25th anniversary of the Family Promise organization, which is based here in Ridgewood. It's been based here for the last six years. They effectively, and they haven't missed a day, as I understand, 25 years, of giving out hot meals to folks. Right now, they're in the Burton County Shelter in Hackensack. Some of our houses of worship participate in that, I know Temple O'Zreel does. It's just a wonderful organization. They celebrated their 25th anniversary this week, and it's just another gem that we have in this community. We should all appreciate.
So with that, ready to go back to public comment? Anyone want to make comment? All right.
Don't run, Linda.
You sit too far away from the mic.
Do I have to repeat my name? Yes. Linda Tarzian, 576 Highland Avenue. I'm interested in the shade tree, since I wasn't at that meeting, is there any talk of adding more trees, especially after Superstorm Sandy and the work that PSCNG has been doing over the last few years to cut branches and trees and...
Right, that's what the Shade Tree Commission is doing. Last year, there was about $8,000 in the budget, and that bought 25 street trees to plant and replace, but they take down about, last year they took down 220 trees, and some of that was due to the sidewalk replacement program. But there's other initiatives that were started, the Adopt a Tree program, so residents, if they'd like to, could purchase a tree for about $350, and includes the tree and the planting and everything else, so the town will come out and do markouts and get trees in. So last year, we planted about 10 or 11 through that program. So we got 36, but the Shade Tree Commission's relatively know it's not quite two years old, and there's another initiatives being looked at through the Green Team for Grants available to get trees planted in Ridgewood. So it's kind of a groundswell that's starting now, so we're having these kind of programs to put it out there, so people who are interested could find some information on the village website. The Adopt a Tree application, the form is there, and we meet regularly on the second[1718.17]